Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Roseville City Council Meeting of August 3, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council Meeting. If you are present here tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, they are available to my left and at the end of the table. Please help yourself. As a reminder, the Brown Act prohibits the City Council from taking action on any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda or having discussion on items not listed. Speakers wishing to address the City Council may do so by stepping up to the podium, and we will be allowed three minutes to speak on non-agenda items. However, if the item is noted on tonight's agenda, you will have five minutes. The maximum allotted time is 25 minutes for non-agenda items. Speakers, if we request that if you do address the City Council, that you please consider stating your name for the record. When the timer comes on and the red light is on, please conclude your comments as we're getting close to terminating the time. Again, thank you for your participation tonight, and welcome to the City of Roseville. Thank you. With that, we'll get started with our roll call. Mayor Bernasconi.
Here.
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Elverd.
Here.
And Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to request Lieutenant B., would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move, we have one presentation this evening, and I would like to ask Kristi Correll if she would meet me at the podium, please. Good evening. One of the fun things we get to do is, on the council, is to, I guess, watch people after a distinguished career leave. So, that is my task for this evening is to talk a little bit about your work with the City of Roseville. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to read part of this resolution for Kristi. She began her career with the City of Roseville in 1996, when timesheets were filled out on paper, and the city had 701 full-time employees and almost 60,000 residents. She is a senior, well, she started out as a senior account clerk in our finance department. She was promoted to payroll technician in 1999 and became the acting payroll supervisor in 2000. She was promoted again to payroll supervisor on, in November of 2000. She re, that job was retitled as a payroll manager in 2023. It was reclassified to a business service supervisor, and she was promoted to finance manager in April of 2014, and in 2020, she was promoted to the assistant finance director. She was recently recognized as a Pride of Roseville City Manager Award, and she was recognized by the finance department for her contribution to the workforce cloud. And just a couple months ago, she was recognized with the Pride of Roseville Distinguished Service Award. She's played a key role in the city's budget process, providing labor cost estimates for more than 20 annual budgets. She's contributed to the city's labor negotiation by providing trustworthy labor costing, resulting in 87 negotiated labor agreements. She's provided exemplary leadership and a positive attitude. She's known for her excellent customer service skills. She's forged strong relationships both inside and outside of the city, encouraging collaboration. As a city now has 1,320 full-time employees and over 151,000 residents. So, after 26 years, she's decided to retire, do something different, and you will be greatly missed, Kristi, and you are remembered by all of your friends and coworkers for all of the contributions that you've made to the city. So, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to commend you for your outstanding service and dedication to our city and the finance department, and we, congratulations, and we wish you a long and enjoyable retirement.
Thanks so much.
The floor is yours if you'd like to make some comments.
I just want to say, it's been a privilege, but one of the best things, decisions in my life was to take a job here. One of my best friends worked for the library years ago, and she kept pushing me, "You've got to work for the city, you've got to work for the city." So, I finally, after like three tries, I finally got a job. And I, it's just, it's been the best career, and it's going to be really hard not to get up and do this every day. But I have my first grandbaby due a week after I retire, so I'm sure my time will be filled. But I want to thank you. Thank you, Don. You've always been there to support me. Thank you, Dennis. Dennis has been a great support, and I really appreciate my career here. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. We'll move on to public comment. Now is the time for anyone to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a comment? Now you can come forward. Good evening, and if you would please state your name for us.
Good evening, council, mayor, manager. My name is Muriel Moore. As everyone knows, I am a resident of Roseville, and I want to talk in regards to the upcoming State of the City message, but not particularly that, it's in lieu of that, which is the VIP breakfast hosted by the chamber. Okay. As I understand and from reading, and I do want to read briefly, and I know I have three minutes, I've timed myself on this, so. It says, "Join us for a free," and that's in bold, something like me, bold and black, but anyways, just levity there. But, "For a State of the City, a State of the City speech with Mayor Bernasconi," yes, "and City Manager Dominic," but it goes on after that to say that there is a Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce VIP breakfast, and tickets for the breakfast can be purchased here and blah, blah, blah. You can click on a link. This is on your website, by the way. My problem, my question with, with that is, I believe that the breakfast is being held at the high school, the New Park, the West Park High School that was recently, which is public funds. You are public officials, okay, having a breakfast hosted there by the chamber when the chamber's members are basically business people. It's residents that vote, not business people. Having it there so that it is not going to one of their members is a, is a distrust, a mistrust of my dollars and cents as a taxpayer. Holding it there so that the chamber benefits because the VIP breakfast, if you're not a member of the chamber, it's going to cost you $50 to attend. Not necessarily a Denny's Grand Slam breakfast, or buying a table which is $5,000 sponsoring a table. This ripes for things becoming open and targets for the council members. When I say that, when you are allowing business entities, developers and so forth, to meet and host you a breakfast that we, the public who pays for you, for your, for your jobs, and the school that was built, to have such a function there. Why didn't they have it over at the development, the development, whatever, I'm trying to think of my words, for the constructors, the contractors building, having it there, rather than tying it in with our schools, which will be back in session, by the way, and which will be hosting, as I say, you all and the public, like I say, not necessarily a Denny's Grand Slam, it's not $10, and it's costing to get in. It makes it ripe for business entities to influence the council, which is wrong. That's wrong. Okay, so that's what I wanted to say, that's my comment on that. They can, I got a couple of places in mind they could host it at if they want to, you know, Randy Peters, or Paul Martins, or any of those other nice places that will benefit and not be using our tax dollars to host a breakfast. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your comments. And just to reiterate, there are no public funds that are going to be used for this, and the State of the City is free for everyone to attend. Is there anyone here else tonight that would like to make a comment? Now you can come forward. We also have one more public comment at the end of the meeting. If you have something that you would like to share, then. I'd like to ask our clerk to please read the procedures for the consent calendar.
Thank you. So, all matters on consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, the staff, or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such requests. If there's anyone in our audience or public that would like to pull an item for further discussion, please step up to the podium at this time. I see none, ma'am, here, so we can move on with items 7.1 through 7.10.
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Yes, again, items 7.1 through 7.10 are on the consent. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Haldeschild, with a second by Councilmember Mendoza. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. All matters passed on a five-to-zero vote.
Thank you. We will move on to item 8.1, Retiree Medical Insurance Optional Benefit, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and council members. My name is Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, and with me tonight is Kristi Correll, Assistant Finance Director, and the subject matter expert on this topic to answer any technical questions at her last council meeting before her retirement. The purpose of this agenda item is the first reading of recommended amendments to the Municipal Code section dealing with the city's retiree medical insurance optional benefit. The city offers access to medical insurance to retirees through its contract with the California Public Employees' Retirement System, or CALPERs. Participation in the CALPERs Medical Insurance Program is governed by a state law called the Public Employees' Medical and Hospital Care Act, or PEMCA. And under PEMCA, the city contributes a set amount towards retiree medical insurance premiums on a monthly basis, and the city's contribution is the statutory minimum, which is called the PEMCA minimum amount, which is currently $149 a month. Based on the city's Memoranda of Understanding, or MOUs, with our unions and the management and confidential terms, conditions, and understandings, the city makes additional contributions to retirees based upon certain hire dates. The city created a tiered benefit system based on hire date for its contributions to retiree medical as one of the tools to help the city address its retiree medical liability in the last decade or two. And then back in June of 2015, City Council adopted an ordinance, which is codified at Chapter 3.09 of the Roseville Municipal Code, which enacted a new retiree medical optional benefit. And retirees eligible for this benefit are the Tier 1 and Tier 2 employees hired before certain dates, and they are permitted to waive participation in the retiree medical benefit that is described in their applicable MOU and opt into this optional benefit that's described in this ordinance that was passed by council in 2015. So, retirees who do not exercise this option remain eligible for their Tier 1 or Tier 2 city contribution that's defined in their MOU. So, since January 1 of 2017, eligible retirees who sign an irrevocable election agreement receive benefits under this optional benefit ordinance. An election under this ordinance is time-sensitive and must occur prior to the city's retiree receiving their first medical payment. This optional benefit amount was established back in 2017, and it increases by 2% annually. So, in response to requests that the city received from the retirees, retired City of Roseville Employees Association, staff are recommending some minor cleanup edits to this ordinance to clarify the calculation of the city's reimbursement and make one additional change to specify that notices of future amendments to this ordinance shall be sent by U.S. Mail to the affected retirees. The recommended amendments do not change benefits and are not intended to impact the benefits described in this chapter of the Roseville Municipal Code, and this particular ordinance requires that the city provide notice of the proposed amendments to the ordinance to retirees that are affected, and we have done that. Amendment of this ordinance also requires an affirmative vote of at least four fifths of the membership of the City Council, and I think it's important to note that the city collaborated with ARCOR on the proposed edits to this ordinance, and ARCOR has helped us with communication to its members regarding the proposed cleanup amendments. So, the staff recommendation tonight is to introduce for the first reading an ordinance approving these cleanup amendments, which are non-substantive, they don't change the benefit at all, to Title III, Chapter 3.09 of the Roseville Municipal Code, to really enhance the readability and clarity of the provisions of that ordinance that was passed in 2015. And with that, we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the information. Does the council have any questions of staff? No. Okay. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this item? Come forward.
Mayor Bernasconi and council members, my name is Lori Benitez, and I'm president of ARCOR, Retired City of Roseville Employees. I'm here this evening to voice our support for the amendment for City Ordinance 5496. We would like to thank the City Attorney's Office for all their hard work in updating the language and keeping ARCOR informed as far as the process and the progress. We would also like to thank the Human Resources Department for their work in noticing all of the retirees. I know there's a lot of us, so we appreciate that. And just lastly, I want to thank the city for its continued support of ARCOR. We truly appreciate that. And welcome to the club, Kristi. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here this, tonight, that would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. If there's any, if there's not any further deliberation, we have a motion?
Thank you. So, tonight, the City Council will consider introducing the first reading and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Roseville, amending Chapter 3.09 of the Title III of the Roseville Municipal Code.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeschild, with a second by Councilmember Rakucci. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 9.1, Commercial Corridor Plans Workshop, and we will be hearing from staff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
Hi, Gray.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Mike Geis, we're Development Services Director. With me is Greg Bidder, Planning Manager, Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner, and I'd like to introduce tonight for the first time Jessica Lynch, who is an associate planner in the Planning Division. She works in long-range planning. She's been with us about nine months. She's been a driving force behind many of our housing element efforts, along with Lauren and the commercial corridors project. So, this is the second workshop and the second planned opportunity for public input on the corridor plans. Last week, we had pretty much an identical workshop with the Planning Commission, received very good feedback from residents and the public and community, along with commissioners. Again, this is the second opportunity for that. We want to make sure the council and the planning commission have the same basis of information as we move forward. Lauren is going to kick off the presentation, and then Jessica, Jessica's going to do the bulk of the presentation. I beg your indulgence, there's some information to cover, so we may take a few minutes. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Lauren.
Good evening. As Mike indicated, Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner. So, I wanted to set the stage tonight to indicate that for everyone present, this isn't a public hearing. This is a workshop. You won't be asked to make any decisions tonight. So, what we're here to do is provide information about the project for context, and then provide a forum for community feedback and for your feedback as we think about next steps. So, we'll go through the background and context. We'll discuss some key features of the preliminary draft, specific plans, followed by some discussion items we want to highlight based on community feedback. Following our presentations, we'll see if you have any questions and then get some community input. And we're hoping the feedback we hear tonight will give us clarity on revisions folks want to see included in the next draft of the specific plans, which will be the public hearing draft. And once the workshop is over, we can talk about sort of what happens next. So, with that, Jessica, why don't you take it away?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Again, Jessica Lynch, Associate Planner with Development Services. So, first, let's talk about why here, why now. The first thing we want to talk about, or years ago, the city went through the process of setting up revitalization plans for Riverside and for downtown, and we've seen those be very successful. Beautified streetscapes, public amenities, thriving businesses, and new housing to support those businesses and keep eyes on the streets, which reduces illicit activity. Based on the success of these plans, City Council made working on further commercial corridor revitalization plans a City Council priority back in 2019, and then a part of the city's strategic plan. As we began looking at locations, these three corridors jumped out because they are connected to the city's downtown and to each other, and they each include major gateways to the city and to downtown. These corridors may be people's first entry into the city's core. These are also part of established areas that could benefit from reinvestment, and there are many opportunities here to realize quality of life improvements. It was also important to the City Council that staff proposed changes that would increase opportunities for property and business owners and not adversely affect the property value of existing property owners. The, this is one reason that the properties with inconsistent land use and zoning are not proposed for down zones, such as from R3 for multifamily residential to R1 for single-family residential. Properties zoned R1 can only be developed with one home, but R3 properties can be developed with one single-family home, duplexes, triflexes, and multifamily residential. So, this zone provides more options and can be more valuable. Property owners wishing to rezone their properties from R3 to R1 can apply to the city for a rezone. Next slide, please. And again, we're here to talk a little bit about past projects. The City Council's decision to consider planning activities in the areas was also influenced by several controversial infill projects, including the proposed Dutch Brothers Coffee Kiosk at 1017 Douglas Boulevard and the Old Town Lofts Project at 241 Nevada Avenue. The Dutch Brothers Project was denied, and the Old Town Loft Project was approved, but the message that staff heard from the community was that there was a concern about sites developing one by one without a cohesive plan for the overall area. We think it's important to note that these, that those projects, the existing zoning on those properties, allowed for both of those controversial projects, and it's been made clear to us by some of the people commenting and meeting with us on this project that we need to communicate about that more clearly. We wanted to talk a little bit about existing zoning. We'll emphasize this a couple times tonight, but we want to make sure that people understand. Most of the land identified in the plans as multifamily is already zoned for multifamily. So, apartments are already allowed on most of these properties whether or not this project is approved. That's true of the commercial property as well. Multifamily is allowed with a conditional use permit, but this project would allow the development of multifamily housing by right without an additional permit required. The difference is that we're proposing some streamlining for both multifamily and commercial improvements. If those projects meet the more specific design- if those projects meet the more specific design standards that we're adding to the plan, specific to each corridor plan area. And why now? Part of the reason is that after identifying, uh, next slide, please. Part of the reason is that, oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Part of the reason is after identifying commercial corridor revitalization as important, the city sought and received state grant money for planning efforts just like this, enabling us to move forward with the project, which the city was planning to do anyway, at less cost to the city's general fund, saving our taxpayers' money. Note that this is a planning grant, not a construction grant. None of the funding can be used for actual construction of projects. However, if we go through this process and put conceptual plans together, it will make the city more competitive for future infrastructure grant money for streetscape and utility improvements. Staff reviewed each of these three commercial corridor areas to identify their existing land uses, zoning designations, and open spaces to look at potential opportunities and challenges. This project is the city's first formal land use planning effort focused specifically on these three corridors. Now let's talk about the overall project goals, which we identified during the public visioning process. They are streetscape improvements, commercial redevelopment and reinvestment, and to streamline the process for high-density housing. Why these three equal goals? Streetscape improvements make corridor, the corridors more vibrant, more pleasant to walk or bike, can enhance public safety, provide community identity, can improve property values, and can incentivize surrounding business improvements. Commercial investment and reinvestment serves a lot of the same purposes as streetscape improvements, but can also provide more services and support for the surrounding established neighborhoods. And finally, we want to streamline the approval process for high-density housing for properties zoned for multifamily. It's worth noting that high-density housing within commercial areas supports those businesses and helps them thrive. And it can also enhance public safety by ensuring that there are eyes on the street after businesses close, which deter illicit activities. We'll be discussing more on housing later because this is the part of the project that has been subject to the most discussion in the community. Whether we are discussing streetscapes, commercial improvements, or housing, the key is to use the specific plan to identify design standards to guide development. So reflecting on what I said earlier about how multifamily and commercial uses are already allowed, the specific plan gives us the opportunity to develop area-specific standards to address community concerns and development, and define how development should look and relate to the surrounding community. Bearing that in mind, a lot of our outreach has focused on visioning, streetscapes, and design. And now I'd like to talk a little bit about the public outreach efforts that we've done for this project. Outreach has included much more than what is listed on this list, but these are the key outreach events. We'll go briefly over that, but it's important to note that when we started doing outreach for this project, we weren't allowed to meet in person. So we had to think outside of the box on how to reach as many people as we could. While this was challenging, it actually opened up the process to some people who might not have been able to participate in all of the meetings if they were in person, such as parents with young children at home, people without the ability to get to the meeting, people who would have to travel long distances, and people who wouldn't be able to sit through an entire meeting. The first of these was the virtual open house in June of last year that focused on visioning, asking people what they valued about their neighborhoods and what they'd like to see improved, and included a whiteboard exercise where people helped develop a vision statement for each corridor. Sorry. The walking tour that launched right after the open house included questions like, what would make walking and biking here more pleasant? What would give this location identity? And what types of uses would you like to see more of? Next slide, please. Also, I want to take the time to thank our amazing admin team, Grace McKenzie and Andrew, who did all of the work preparing and mailing thousands and thousands of letters over the past few months. To summarize the effort, the overall effort, outreach on this project kicked off last year with 9,000 brightly colored postcards sent to all property owners and residents within a half-mile walk of the project. Throughout this process, staff have met with dozens of interested parties to discuss the project and had hundreds of phone calls with property owners and residents to go over questions, comments, and suggestions on the project. We've had articles published in local and regional publications, on our website, sent emails to the Interested Persons List, and provided notice on the city's social media. Staff have met with residents, property owners, business operators, and community groups to discuss possible impacts and collect ideas and suggestions for what we can include in the plan. We've hosted a number of events like we've discussed. And we're not done because there will be another draft of these plans published, and I want to make it clear that we're not describing this outreach so that we can check a box and explain that it's been enough. We are continuing to reach out to people, are continuing to evolve how we communicate and what we communicate based on feedback we're getting from the, about the project and what people indicate they need or want to hear about. All of this communication has helped staff identify concerns and ideas on what people want to see in these communities. So now let's talk about what the preliminary draft specific plans do based on all of this work. The preliminary draft plans include both streetscape improvement options and frontage design guidelines. The streetscape improvement options, some of which are shown here on this slide, focus on the area located within the city's right-of-way and describe the existing conditions, constraints, and opportunities, followed by a list of potential improvement options. The frontage design guidelines focus on development standards to apply to future commercial or multifamily projects on properties with roadway frontage and talk about landscaping, sidewalk widening or separation, and other frontage improvements that would occur on private property. The preliminary draft plans include both streetscape improvement options and frontage design guidelines. The streetscape improvement options, some of which are shown here on the slide, focus on the area within, located within the city's right-of-way and described as existing conditions, constraints, and opportunities, followed by a list of potential improvement options. The frontage design guidelines focus on the, slide. I think so. I think we might have the wrong slide here. My apologies. My, sorry about that. The frontage design guidelines focus on the development standards to apply to future commercial or multifamily projects on properties with roadway frontage and talk about landscaping, sidewalk widening or separation and other frontage improvements that would occur on private property. Next slide, please. There we go. In terms of land use, I think we should be on, here. Sorry, we'll be. Okay, I think we should be on a slide called Existing Zoning and Land Use. Yeah, there we go, thank you. In terms of land use, we're doing three general things. Mostly, we are correcting the land use to be compatible with the existing zoning. For some properties, we are proposing to change the underlying zoning district, and we are proposing to replace the many planned development ordinances with a standard zone district. A lot of the corrections we're making, and this has led to some confusion about the project, is to change the land use to high-density residential wherever existing property is already zoned multifamily residential. A lot of the people didn't know these properties, many of which have one or two homes on them or are in commercial use, are already zoned for multifamily. So people have thought that we are trying to convert those areas to multifamily because of the land use correction to high-density residential. But what we're doing is fixing an inconsistency between land use designation and zoning. Properties zoned multifamily is allowed to be developed with multifamily today and should not have a low-density residential or commercial land use designation. That's an error which exists because the older areas of the city, there are a lot of inconsistencies. Now there are some projects where we are proposing to change the underlying zoning, and we'll highlight some of those areas in just a bit so we can discuss whether or not we want to continue with those proposed changes or keep them as they currently are. I'd mentioned the planned developments, or what we called PD zones. And this is basically an old zoning designation that we have, that we no longer use, where instead of using a citywide zone district, each property or groups of properties have their very own ordinance. These are often unclear and not very transparent to owners or interested people. Here's an example of what a PD can look like. So by and large, we're proposing to replace the planned development zones with standard citywide zones to make everyone's life easier. As you can see here, this ordinance basically just provides a location, doesn't say anything about the uses allowed there. And finally, we've estimated how much multifamily growth we thought could be accommodated in each planning area by looking at vacant and underused properties currently with commercial or multifamily zoning. Repeating again, this wasn't looking to areas to rezone so we could accommodate more housing. This was looking at existing properties and their zoning today and figuring out how many units could result if folks brought projects, more projects like the Nevada Street Lofts. We estimated that up to 50 units in the Atlantic Street Plan area could occur, up to 200 units in the Douglas Harding Plan area, and because of definite interest by a developer in a specific property, we've estimated 600 units in the Douglas Sunrise area. Then to provide comprehensive planning and streamlining, instead of addressing things project by project, we had utility studies prepared based on those estimates to make sure that there is capacity. So in total, that's up to 850 units across all three plan areas. Again, it's not that these units would have been prohibited if not for this plan. The vacant and underused sites were examined to determine capacity where all the sites in the existing multifamily zone or commercial zone. What the plan does do is provide streamlining in a couple of ways. One, the utility capacity studies have been done upfront, so as long as the proposal is within the amount of units assumed in the study, they won't need their own study, reducing processing time and cost. Two, a proposal will still need some level of design review, but if they qualify, it will be a less costly permit, and if on a commercial property, multifamily residential won't need a conditional use permit. Three, we have corrected land use inconsistencies upfront, so that won't be, that won't need to be done as part of the development project. Because normally, we'd look for an applicant to correct something like that themselves based on, as part of the project review, which would cost them additional time and money. Now, exchange for this streamlining, projects will need to conform to the design guidelines and standards in the plan. As we've mentioned, these are standards tailored to these areas to address concerns specific to those communities. To implement these standards, the project includes applying what is called special area overlay zone to all of the properties in the plan areas. This overlay is added to the existing zone district, it doesn't replace it. So if a commercial, excuse me, if a property is zoned community commercials, it would then be zoned community commercial slash special area. All this does is point you to the specific plan for design guidelines, which supplement or replace the citywide community design guidelines in recognition of the unique character of each of these plan areas. Based on the concerns that we've heard, we want to make sure to emphasize some of the things that the project does not do. The project does not give, approve any given site for development. It streamlines some processes, but some level of design review would still be needed, would still be required for projects before anything could be constructed. On a related note, the city would not be building anything. When or whether a site was developed with a commercial, residential, or mixed-use project would depend on the property owner and market conditions. The project does not include any homeless shelters and does not require that all of the housing units be affordable or low-income. The project also does not make single-family homes illegal or what we call non-conforming. Also, I'd like to add here that another question that we've gotten is why housing here and not in the western developing areas of the city? The answer is that quite a bit of multifamily housing is planned in those areas. This is a map showing the distribution of high-density residential sites located throughout the city. All of the newer specific plan areas in the western area of the city are designed so that approximately 30% of the units are development, are developed at densities of 13 units per acre or higher, which is the city's definition of high-density residential, and typically includes apartments. And a further 30% of the units are development, are developed at densities of 7 to 12 units per acre, which is medium-density residential. This is yard-style homes, townhomes, or similar. So 60% of the units being built in the western area of the city are not low-density residential. We're not concentrating all of the city's higher-density land just in the older infill areas of the city. As it was mentioned earlier, we spoke to the Planning Commission last week and we got, heard a lot of great feedback. The feedback that we got from the general public, which included primarily residents of the Enwood neighborhood, though there were several residents from other neighborhoods, included the following. Concerns about multifamily housing and affordable or low-income housing, parking, traffic, roadway safety. There were calls for more bicycle infrastructure and safety for bicyclists. Were concerns about neighborhood character and how the plans would affect that. Some people had some concerns about open space. Some people wanted to see in, more detail in the plans. There were questions about funding, both how things would be funded and how the plan was funded. There were concerns about the, about the project focusing and calling itself a commercial corridor plan since there's a housing component. Some people had questions about, or wanted to see information about preservation and called for period-appropriate design. And then not necessarily related to the project, but still a concern nonetheless, included concerns about homelessness and crime, and then questions about how these projects would affect that. Feedback from the Planning Commissioners included questions about how the plan areas were set, information about visual differences between the plan areas and how that would look, clarification on the city's affordable housing goals and how that would fit into the plan, clarification on homeless shelters, impacts on businesses, also specifying that most properties with land use changes were already zoned R3. One of the commissioners stated that Harding Boulevard could be a good site for a road diet and pointing out that housing was likely to happen in commercial areas. They also expressed preference to rezone the Will's Road area to commercial and stated that the plan is forward-thinking and could help with housing affordability. One of the most important but underappreciated parts of the specific plan is its ability to simplify and streamline development for new construction and site or building modification. We do most of the work upfront, so less work is needed when a development application is actually filed. This can be years down the road. We've already looked at the big picture issues, so we've already had, we already have a plan for how to deal with them in an efficient and cohesive manner. Each of the specific plans include an implementation chapter, which then provides the rules for development specific to each plan area. The streamlining provisions of each specific plan allow for level lower review for several improvement types as long as the project is consistent with the specific plan. This can result in much faster and less expensive approvals. Once a project comes in, staff would determine what level of review it requires based on the project's zoning, design, and consistency with the specific plan and design guidelines. Consistent projects may complete the design review using the city's administrative review process, which requires approval by the planning manager and costs $1,445. To compare, the standard design review process requires an $8,000 deposit and must go to hearing. The administrative permit design review process would require staff to send out notices to properties located within 300 feet of the project site, and anyone would be allowed to request a hearing for projects they feel require a higher level of approval. A parking reduction may also be requested as part of the design review permit process instead of requiring another fee and administrative permit to process. The specific plans each allow the following types of, the following project types to use the administrative permit design process if they are consistent with the specific plan guidelines. It includes non-residential minor additions of 15% of a building's total existing footprint or less, minor site improvements that require no additional technical studies, and high-density residential including vertical mixed-use projects with a minimum density of 25 units per acre. For clarity, I do want to note that unrelated to the corridor plans, high-density residential projects that provide at least 20% affordable housing do not require the administrative permit and can use the city's objective design standards, which were developed in conformance with recent state legislation. However, that is unrelated to this project, so we're not planning on discussing it anymore, but just to, for purposes of transparency. Similarly, the specific plans allow for Similarly, the specific plans allow for some minor commercial design reviews, such as for facade improvements, to obtain a minor design review permit, or MDRP, which costs a flat $244, rather than doing the full design review process. It would be for things like painting a commercial structure. This is a more streamlined process that does not require notices to be mailed, but they are posted on the entrance of the business for 10 days. Overall, these processes allow for a less costly, more streamlined process because we've figured out the designs, issues, and details ahead of time on a comprehensive level for each corridor. Staff is working on providing as much clarity as possible in the procedures in the next draft of the specific plans. Now that we've gone over some of the background needed for clarifications, let's go over some specific discussion items that staff would like your feedback on. This is a map of the Atlantic Street corridor, and we've identified three areas for discussion. First labeled "1" on the map is an area on Wills Road that is currently zoned for industrial uses. This is where U-Haul is currently constructing a storage facility, and there is an existing auto body repair shop. Staff proposed rezoning this area to general commercial to give additional options for future business opportunities at this location, and would use the specific plan to allow for continued operation of the light industrial uses currently occurring here. We have heard from property owners and business operators here about their concerns that the rezone might prevent them from expanding their current light industrial uses. The general commercial zone adds a lot of, a lot more permitted uses, but does not restrict industrial uses, but does restrict industrial uses, so there could be a trade-off. We'd like to know how the city council and the community feel about that trade-off. The Planning Commission indicated that the expansion of uses in this location would be preferable to allow for as many options as possible. If staff continues in this direction, we will ensure that existing businesses may continue to operate and reinvest in their properties. Second, the area labeled "2," in the area labeled as "2," staff is proposing to rezone from duplex and single-family to multifamily housing. We did this because it seemed logical to continue the multifamily zoning that exists west of East Street as a buffer between the commercial properties located directly adjacent to Atlantic Street and the low-density single-family south of Shearer Street. This is not vital to the project, and we've heard concerns from some of the property owners and the neighbors, so we would like feedback on this proposed change. Several of the commenters at the Planning Commission meeting expressed concerns about possible proximity to multifamily housing, so there seemed to be general support for this change. Last, on number three, we are considering moving the plan area boundary to exclude the low-density single-family properties located south of Shearer Street from the plan area entirely. This is based on feedback from some of the residents. And again, due to the comments expressed by many members of the public at the Planning Commission meeting, staff believes that the public would generally support this change. And now on to the Sunrise-Douglas corridor. Similar to what was proposed in the Atlantic Street Plan, staff proposed to rezone the properties shown circled and read on this map from duplex and single-family to multifamily. Staff have not heard as much from residents located in this area as the Atlantic Street Plan area. Similarly, this change is not vital to the plan, so we would again like feedback on this proposed change. No one expressed any strong feelings about this possible change at the Planning Commission This slide is not focused on any one plan area, but we're looking for more of an overall discussion of some housing considerations throughout all three corridors. We've received some questions about how to incorporate preservation and reuse of older buildings into the plans, designing appropriate connections between new development areas and older neighborhoods and design guidelines. We don't have a specific question here. We just want to flag these topics as helpful areas for community discussion. Again, reflecting back on how much these sites permit housing, how many of these sites permit housing or other development already, we want to have a robust discussion about what that should look like. And we have a few examples of what staff thinks this could look like, based on some of the feedback we've heard so far. A couple commenters at the Planning Commission asked for the city to consider preservation and reuse of older buildings. Commenters from the Enwood neighborhood expressed concern about adding to the existing parking issues if additional homes are built. Also, concerns about dangerous roadway conditions for cars entering and exiting the neighborhood to and from Atlantic Street. And there was also some discussion about pedestrian connection into the Hillcrest neighborhood if the South Harding property is developed. Staff currently supports not allowing vehicle traffic here, but would encourage emergency vehicle and pedestrian access, so that pedestrians could have a direct connection to Garbelino Park and not have to walk up to Harding and then over on Douglas to access this neighborhood amenity. And we have a couple of examples of what some multifamily design could look like. This here is an example of a multifamily project and what it could look like in an existing single-family neighborhood, using traditional building design and materials. And this is an example of what we call horizontal mixed use, with commercial uses and multifamily uses on the same property, but not located within the same building.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the presentation portion of tonight. I appreciate your patience while we went through all of that. After community discussion, we can talk about next steps, but just so folks know, we'll be publishing a revised draft of the specific plans, so there will be opportunities for more review and comment on these in the future. Just to recap, because we covered a lot, development in these plan areas is allowed on a lot of these properties already, so we've been focusing on defining a cohesive plan for how that potential development should look. We have included some streamlining as an incentive for people to improve their properties, combined with some more detailed or location-specific standards to meet. And although we've worked to keep this presentation focused, there's plenty more we can talk about if anyone has questions or wants to know more. I think Jessica sort of covered all of the concerns that were raised during the meeting. Some other concerns we didn't cover include things like changes to state housing laws and property taxes or values. And some people have lived here a long time and don't like the changes they've seen in Roseville and are just concerned about future change. This whole process and what effect that might have can be confusing and worrisome to folks, and we understand we need to work hard to try and communicate with everyone in non-technical ways, which is one reason why folks are encouraged to contact us. We will respond. We said this at our last workshop. We have an inbox that will, at the very end of this workshop, we will put up, and we're available by phone as well, or we can meet you in person. So if anybody has questions, they are welcome to contact us. So at this point, we would turn it over to you and see if you have any questions for us on everything we just covered.
Okay. Thank you both, Jessica and Lauren. I think the best way for us to move forward with this is I'll open up to the council to see if there's actual questions of staff, if you have questions. And then I'd like to open it up for public comment so that we can hear from anyone who's here, and then bring it back to the staff for our comments. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, so at this point, does, are there any questions of the council or of staff from my colleagues?
Two questions. Scott, do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
I'd like you to go first, because then you ask the questions I'm going to ask, so. Yeah, two questions. So I think you said, let me frame it in the form of a question. These areas are eligible for accessory dwelling units? So really, there could be an increase in the development activity without anything happening in this area, right?
Yeah.
Because these are larger lot areas, and some of them are.
Depends on the area, but yeah.
Yep. And then the second thing, and I think the most important thing, and Councilmember Mendonza will remember this one, is will this impact the ability for any of the property owners to make changes to their structures, and will it make it more complicated? What was the garage, Councilmember Mendonza?
ASR.
Yeah. So how does that, how does this interact with, you know, the businesses there already?
In terms of actual approval processes for building modifications or site modifications, it should be easier. The approval processes we've drafted so far are sort of lower level. They require fewer dollars and are often planning manager approval as opposed to a hearing body approval.
So other than the setbacks, there aren't any design standards or things like that that you often get with a specific plan or a community plan?
Now, there, yes, so there is a trade-off of sorts, where yes, there are design standards in the plan that we're putting in, like for instance, Harding Boulevard, there really isn't much in the way of trees on Harding Boulevard. So we would have design standards in the plan calling for if you own a property that has frontage and you're making, you know, building a new building or doing a major change, we're going to look for landscaping along the frontage. But to be clear, we would be looking for that anyway. We just wouldn't have a sort of, a more quantified target for you, so it would give you some transparency and clarity.
Helping Mayor find, but architectural design, this is more, this is more landscape and...
This is more site design, except I would say in the Atlantic Plan and South Douglas, not South Douglas, but Douglas past Harding, where for multifamily, we would be asking for the use of more traditional design materials, because that's what the community has asked for. They are not excited about modern buildings.
We also would still, we would continue to apply the citywide design guidelines that are already adopted, and we use those throughout the city. So those would continue to apply to all commercial projects.
Yeah, these standards would supplement those.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilmember Al, do you have any questions?
I do. So if somebody owns a piece of property that's currently commercially zoned right now anywhere in the city, they don't have a byright to do this kind of housing. This is only going to allow, in this zoned area, an overlay where they can now, if they choose, do the housing, right?
Yeah, you would be, anywhere in the city, you could propose housing with a conditional use permit. So, but this, but this, the conditional use permit would no longer be required in the community commercial or neighborhood commercial zones.
By adding this overlay to property, it doesn't, I know this, it doesn't require any kind of change. The property owner can do what they want with it. They can, they can make commercial, they can make housing, they can go back to commercial, they can change all that, because they own it, it's got those options. Is that extra flexibility going to increase their property tax? If they don't do anything, is it going to increase the property tax because there's now more ability to do things on their property?
You know, not as far as I am aware. We've talked about that, but you know, first of all, property taxes, this is not my area of expertise, but property taxes are assessed, you know, when the property changes hands or something happens like that. And I, and I don't imagine property tax assessors are paying attention to a slash special area overlay when assessing taxable value on a property.
The overlay expands the range of permitted uses, which may ultimately impact the market value of the property, but probably not substantially.
Okay. So if it changes hands, maybe at that point, it might be more valuable, because it's not going to invoke until...
Honestly, the underlying, the underlying zoning and land use is commercial. We have special area overlays all over the city, in all of our specific plan areas, and it has had no measurable impact. It's just a zoning. It's an administrative tool for us to administer the zoning and land use.
Okay, excellent. And my other things or comments later, I think.
Okay. Questions over here?
I just had one question. The commercial area that you had mentioned, I believe it was number six in your presentation, the Wills Road where the new U-Haul is, you've got the fixed body shop to the north of it, so that new structure is going in there. If you're coming off of Atlantic onto Wills, you hit that stoplight to turn left or right onto Harding, the way that that U-Haul building is currently being constructed, it is totally wiped out the visibility of Sculpture Park and the tree lines, and it was kind of sad to see that. So I guess my question is, if, if what was mentioned in this presentation goes forward, would the city's standards be different? I mean, when we have things like that, like visibility and, and, I don't want to say right-of-way, because that wouldn't apply here, but aesthetics, you know, I'm just thinking, when you have things like, like the large sculpture at Sculpture Park, and I'm thinking of over on near South Harding, there's a High Point behind where the Big O Tires is that kind of looks east, if you're looking towards, like Royer and things like that. And there's certain components and aspects of the city that are aesthetically pleasing. So I would just hope that we're keeping in mind as, if we do build this out and we allow for higher structures and more commercial to go in there, even though they're already zoned commercial. But I just kind of liked us to keep, keep in mind, you know, that sometimes the visual aesthetics, you know, should trump what, what could be put on those particular parcels. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple. My question is, like when we've worked on any of our specific plans, I just want to make sure that as we're looking at different types of housing arrangements, that we don't forget, you know, the commercial, you know, like they have stores and groceries, because we've just gone through the West Plan, having, you know, very few and just starting to get them. While we're making changes here, I just want to make sure we still have, look at that mix of restaurants and grocery stores and Trader Joe's and all that, and they just don't get plowed over into housing. Because I think we have an opportunity to make this area very pretty and make it, enhance it, but there are amenities there too that we want to, we want to keep. And also, if you had a, if you had a house in this area and it's, it has the overlay of multifamily, if they wanted to sell it, could they sell it to somebody who also just wants to make it a house?
Yes. Yeah, single-family is a permitted use on a multifamily, of properties owned multifamily, and most of the multifamily properties in those neighborhoods, the reason people didn't know they were multifamily zoning is because there's just one house on them.
Okay. No, I think that's, that's kind of, that's important to know. And I also, I like that you also mentioned in your presentation that there's high-density apartments, but there's also at-rate apartments and at-rate places to rent.
Yes.
And then my last question is, I know you talked about potentially doing something on Sunrise, but how far do you go down to Sunrise? Do you go to the, you know, the U-Haul, the old hospital, or...
It's down to about Coloma, though not on both sides of the street. It goes on just one side of Sunrise past there, but yes, it includes that property.
Okay. My interest is that we have a really nice entranceway from Citrus Heights into Roseville with the trees and, you know, the grass and the hills, and I don't want to lose, I really don't want to lose that as far as like Councilmember Mendonza mentioned about some of our visual amenities. We always were looking at our sites going into the city of Roseville, and this is one we've had for a long time, so I don't, I don't want to, what is it, throw the baby out with the bathwater. Those, there's things that really are nice that I'd like to, maybe enhance, but, but not get rid of.
Yep.
That's my, that's my questions for right now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item? You may come forward now. And if you just want to state your name for us, please.
My name is Ann Broyer Keith, and I live at 1025 Shearer Street. And what I'm concerned about is the first letter I got said that the north side of Shearer, they were going to, maybe, I don't know if they're going to get rid of it or what they're going to do. And it was very nice, I got ahold of Jessica, and she talked to me and was very nice. But I'm very concerned, because it used to be a horse ranch. We all have huge lots, and I know you need land, but I don't feel that you should think about taking our land. Anyway, I'd like to know that Caltrans is there along Atlantic Street. If you're making a deal to either exchange lands, move the yard, and then what about the trailer park or mobile home that's there? I don't, there's one big lot that you can put, one, either a big apartment or two or three, that would house people. But I'd like to know, when they talk about Atlantic Street, if you're going to get rid of Caltrans or the Mobile Home Park or Trailer Park, then you've got some area to put them. But I don't feel, I'm very nervous about you talking about Shearer Street. A lot of young families have moved in, especially since the pandemic, they got to buy their first home. And they fixed them up, it's a very nice neighborhood, and I'm very nervous about, I don't want to see you take away homes from people that have worked hard and now have bought homes and are fixing it up. So that's my concern. And I'd like to know about the Mobile Home Park or the Trailer Park, and I'd like to know about Caltrans, because unless you remove them, there's no place on Atlantic Street except that one lot behind the car repair shop that you can put anything. And then when they talk about going up into Shearer Street, I'm very nervous about that. I don't plan on moving or losing my property.
Thank you for your comments. Does staff want to respond to anything?
Do you want, well, I can tell you that there is no, there's no component of any of these plans that involves the city taking any property. The city doesn't plan on taking any property. We're... We're, we're preparing these plans to make it easier for private investment in these properties, either the current property owners or future property owners. So there's not a requirement for anybody to, to build anything. Ultimately, at one, at someday, if the, if the little trailer park, you know, the property owner there decided to do a, you know, brick and mortar, stick-built project, then they would have that ability to do that. But that would be the property owner's discretion, and they have that ability now to do that. The same, I don't know that Caltrans is going to be giving up their, their yard anytime soon. Also, as far as Shear Street goes, I think part of the, part of the discussion that we didn't talk about, that, that neighborhood is all zoned R1 resident, or R1, south of Shear, R1 residential. A lot of the lots don't meet the R1 standards, the existing R1 standards. So we had initially thought, if we rezone it to RS, which is a, which is a similar, single-family zoning district, but it has different development, it has different setbacks, different lot size requirements, it meets the existing built neighborhood. So when folks come in and they want to build an ADU, or they want to expand their home, they, they have different setback standards. And so we have a lot of issues where folks need administrative variances or variances to, to do additions. We thought we would take, take that away by doing this rezone. It's created enough confusion and concern in the neighborhood. Again, as Lauren mentioned, it's not, it's not critical that we keep that, that neighborhood in the, in the specific plan. So we're thinking about, that's why we're thinking about pulling it out. We thought we would make it easier, and apparently we're, we're, it's the confusion it's caused and the concern, you know, it's, it's not like a lot of folks are coming after us to, to, to make changes to their properties. So it's a few a year. It's probably not worth all the angst that it's creating in the neighborhood. But the city's not going to build anything, the city's not going to be taking anybody's property. We're just really trying to facilitate private investment in property.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this item? You can come to the podium, please.
Hey, I'm Bernard Scone, members of the City Council, Nick Alexander, 1700 Eureka Road in Roseville, on behalf of Mr. Richard Michael, the owner of 201 North Sunrise. For old timers like me, and perhaps Councilmember Rakucci might remember this, this was the old Shoe Guard Building.
Oh, gosh.
So our review was limited to the Sunrise Douglas Plan area, and based on our review, we are in support of the Sunrise Douglas Plan as written, and we commend staff for their efforts. Please note that the inclusion of residential units in this plan area improves a jobs housing balance in the Northeast Roseville specific plan and the existing development there. And we would, we would thank you in advance for your consideration, and again, support of the plan and commend, commend staff on their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item?
Hello, everyone. My name's Robert Laycock. I live at 604 Atlantic Street. Our family, the Vigos, got there in 1913. And I'm very, very happy to be here tonight, and I appreciate you listening to me. I'd like to compliment Jessica first, because she's always been there when I've called on the phone, sought information, and she's been very illustrative about, about what the program's about. There are several things, though, that are kind of overlooked here. On Atlantic Street, our neighborhood, we have nowhere to park. Over half the people that live there have nowhere to park. Our building, our, our homes were built a very long time ago. Most of us have really nice yards, but there's nowhere to park. Secondly, when Atlantic Street was widened, how many years ago, commercial businesses had their parking lots, their parking areas, cut in more than a half. The meat store is an example of that. We've got people parking all over because the place has sells really good meat. And I think some of you that have probably been there would, would agree. Now, something else that's developed is the area where Atlantic Street goes into Vernon Street by the huge old locomotive that's there. That has become a very horrendous area for traffic. I met with the city engineer. She's so concerned about traffic in that area that they're talking about discussing of putting a rotary in there. At the same time, Randy Peters has a new restaurant, it's excellent. And right as I walked down here tonight from Atlantic Street, we have people crossing over, families, individuals. They don't want to go all the way down, use the crosswalk, okay. But combined with that and the issue of already so much traffic, it would appear to me that if you're going to build more buildings, apartments, or whatever, on Atlantic Street, I, I can't really understand 50 units and where they will go, or any, anything of that nature. But we have so much traffic already, we have nowhere to park. And at the same time, Roseville is ranked, it's the 45th best city to live in, in the United States. One of the things I think that makes it so is where I live, on Atlantic Street. I can walk to a park to the left, I could walk down to the trail, where people are constantly using bicycles and walking along the trail. I can walk to Trader Joe's, I can walk downtown to the new post office. It's all there. But other issues that have come up, and I want to specifically point out, our police department is probably one of the best in the state of California. But we have had individuals come up from that gulch, from Dry Creek. This summer alone, one guy had a machete, another guy had a crowbar, and another person started a fire. And the third guy, he was pounding on the door of my neighbor's. She's got two kids. So when, this might not seem to be a part of the issue here in the plan we're discussing, but hey, it really is. We really have some bad people that can come up there. Still, it's a great neighborhood. But at the same time, I have to point out that I was talking with a Roseville police officer, oh, two weeks ago, and she pointed out the charm about this neighborhood. We've had several movies there that have been made there even. But my, my, my main thing I really want to see, really want to say is that we have a very old neighborhood. We don't have any parking, but we don't have any real problems either. We have a nice neighborhood, nice people, people know each other, people talk to each other. And I don't know where you want to put 50 units, you know, on Atlantic Street or in our neighborhood, but I really can't see adding more units, meaning more cars. And we already have, don't have any place to park our cars, but the traffic is horrendous, city engineering is aware of it, and they're taking steps. They're discussing possible items they can use to alleviate it. But that's really what I wanted to say. I have enormous respect for the City of Roseville Council. I have watched Roseville develop from something where my family came, there was 500 people here. I've watched this develop since I graduated in 72. We have an extraordinary park system. We, we're just one, more than one step ahead of the rest. And I thank you very much for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Comments? Is there anyone else tonight that would like to comment on this item? Come forward. Good evening.
Hey, Mayor Bernard Scone and the Council. My name's Jason Probst. I live in the Enwood neighborhood. And reiterating the comments of my fellow neighbor, when I moved to Roseville about 20 years ago, I had lived everywhere from San Diego to Seattle, all up and down the West Coast. And when I moved here, I, I loved it. I fell in love with it. And one of the places that I fell in love was downtown Roseville. It reminded me of the places in California I'd lived as a kid, a place where it was safe, where you could raise a family, where you could access the American dream, and it really was the, the epitome of the Golden, the Golden State. Obviously, that's changed, things, things move on. And when I moved here 20 years ago, I found it ironic that a lot of the people that complained about the increase in traffic and uptick in densities, which are valid complaints, never seemed to complain about the housing equity, right? That was never included in the complaints. It was just, oh, there's too many people here. So I was trying to use that as a mitigating factor in being stressed out when I drive through Roseville. Yes, it's going to be crowded. Yes, there's going to be a lot of people here. Well, that's because it's an awesome place to live. So I try and mitigate my own complaints about things, knowing that, you know, my life's getting better because I was fortunate enough to buy here a long time ago. And I don't want to pull up the ladder in behind me. I think that's a thing that people are, they overlook a lot. But at the same time, you know, I am an extreme pedestrian. I walk everywhere in Roseville. I walked down here tonight. I walk in Harding, I walk to Riverside and Darling, and I consider myself pretty, pretty acclimated to everything that's going on in that area. And while I think it would be good to have some pedestrian improvements, those would always be welcome. It's also, you know, an area that our neighborhood is old, and there are definite crime risks. Many of my neighbors have had their catalytic converters stolen. A few weeks ago, one nice gentleman with his family moved in, hard-working guy with a family, they pulled in and took his Harley and loaded it into a truck, four people, in the middle of the night. I have personally had to choke out burglary suspects and hold them for the police. That happened in 2016 during a burglary at the trailer park. I've had to run people off, using weapons off my property. So these are regular things that happen, okay? And it's, I guess it's part of living in city life, but that's kind of why I wanted to move here and stay here, because I could get away from that. Whereas in San Diego, when my apartment was burgled, you know, it'd take three days for the cops to get there, and then they discourage you from filing a report, right? I wanted to live in a community that supported the police and that backed the blue, and that believed in law and order. And I guess the problem is, is I feel like we live downstream, because we live in, basically, an oasis of sanity in a, in a state run by insane people. That's the honest truth of it. And I want Roseville to stay immune from that, but we deal with a lot of the downstream effects, okay? Whenever I go walk on the Darling Way, or I go on the bike trail, I see people that definitely should be in jail, okay? And that's because of Prop 47 and Prop 57, and the state's inability to lock people up that should be behind bars, or deal with our problem with fentanyl at the border, the problem with the drug cartels, all that stuff. They don't want to deal with that, but then people like me have to live with it. You know, I don't let my wife walk on the bike trail without me there, okay? So we have a lot of young families here, and we love our neighborhood, and I don't want to pull up the ladder behind us. But at the same time, it's like, I feel like we, we pull the freight for a lot of things that people in West Roseville don't have to deal with. There's a big homeless problem in Roseville. It's just that you have to walk along a very narrowly conscripted area to see it. I've dealt with it the past 10 years, walking to my bus stop to go to my job in Sacramento. So when you're really intimately familiar with it, and then you see things like this proposed, it's kind of like, I'm a little bit loath to accept it. Well, at the same time, I want to make more housing available for people, but I just don't want to see Roseville become one of those places that I left. And there's a lot of them. So I just would appreciate if you consider our neighborhood. We have trees in our neighborhood that are 100 years old, people that have lived there. All of my neighbors have lived there for decades, and it's wonderful. So I just want to keep opportunities available to other people, but I feel like a lot of the time that when I walk in the neighborhood and I have to sort of keep an eye on everything, and it's just like, this feels like Sacramento. And I don't want it to feel like Sacramento. I want it to feel like Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to this item? You can come forward now. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bernard Scone and City Council members. My name is Derek Pell. I live at 175 Park Drive in the Folsom Road neighborhood. So I walked here too. I'm going to focus my comments mostly on the Douglas-Harding area, as I'm the most familiar with that, but I think in general, they apply to all the specific plans. In general, I'm highly supportive of the plan to create more infill housing. We're all concerned about housing affordability, and, you know, streamlining the process for private development is one key strategy to tackle this. The plan to have buildings close to the street, having mixed-use, walkable, bikable areas is great. I think the city should be applauded for long-range planning of, and growth of this kind. You know, the, the specific plan states that it's one of the lowest greenhouse gas areas of the city. I think it's a perfect area to double down and invest in sustainable growth. I moved to my neighborhood because it's walkable. I can walk to Trader Joe's, I can walk to downtown. And I think the plan could really complement the area. Dense infill housing close to amenities is both the most environmentally sustainable growth option, as well as the only fiscally responsible growth option. Dense mixed-use, people-scaled land use has generally a higher tax base per acreage, partly due to not having large swaths of unproductive parking. It doesn't require new roads, doesn't require new substations, that all degrade over time and take our tax money to maintain. Furthermore, water use in multifamily housing has been shown to be significantly lower on a per-house basis than in single-family housing. And modern building design codes and energy codes are very efficient. You know, staff took a lot of input on design guidelines, and I think in general, the resulting guidelines are solid and blend into the area. I think one of the great things about the neighborhood is it is organic, and there's a lot of diversity in design, partly because it grew up over 100 years. You know, my street has Craftsman bungalow mid-century. I don't know, I don't feel the need to significantly, significantly constrain a corridor, but it looks nice nonetheless. My concern revolves around the lack of vision for what the roads and transportation system will become. The plan is a long-range planning document and generally does well with land use objectives. What is the vision for transportation to support the intensified land usage? The plan clearly states that the goal is to create urban, walkable, bikable areas, and also that these corridors were developed during the 50s, when non-auto modes of transportation were not really considered, yet proposes no changes to the physical street configuration to improve, to improve non-auto-centric modes of transportation. The rendering shown earlier looked great, but none of the main streets in the plan look like that. I've come to understand that the main scope of the plan was not intended to involve any roadway engineering changes. However, one of the plan objectives is to upgrade, is to quote, "upgrade pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to create safe connections within the plan area." I fully understand that street configuration changes are expensive and take a lot of time. I would ask staff in the city to strongly consider, at least planning to study, how to implement a complete streets program. Such improvements could be sidewalk widening, lane narrowing, creating safer, creating safer intersections. Personally, I didn't realize how bad it was to walk until you have a kid and a stroller and a dog and your wife, and you're trying to get to Trader Joe's, and you got to walk down Douglas, and there's like four lanes of high-speed traffic. It is, it's not pleasant. I'd also, you know, like staff to consider connections to adjacent neighborhoods that include modal filters to prevent auto traffic but not pedestrians and cyclists. These already exist elsewhere in the city. I ride through them on my bike ride to work, and are great for promoting, 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 sorry, non-car modes of transportation while maintaining access to neighborhood amenities. In conclusion, I strongly support dense infill housing in Roseville, but think that without street configuration changes, it may be hard to achieve the full goals of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to comment on this item? Come forward. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Mary McDowell. I live in Enwood, which it sounds like hopefully you were taking it out. I have some questions. I would like to know the difference between R3 and high-density housing, because it seems there's a different density component to that, that our neighborhood is not amenable. You're still talking about one side of Shear Street being single-family, and directly across the street would be high-density. Unfortunately, my house would remain single-family, but across the street could be high-density housing. To me, that doesn't quite mesh. And I think part of that is in, there is the underutilized property, which is the old part of the old machine shop, and I think that is eyed for high-density. I think we'll probably lose that, but I think that's why our, that strip of high-density is still remaining there. There's the trailer park, prime for redevelopment, by developer, and the machine shop, empty property. So, and my, you know, I get that you're changing things to correct other problems from previous administrations, but who says in 20 years from now, new administration's not going to look at your plans and say, why did you do that? You know, that's, that's still a question for me. And the funds for this project are related to housing. It, that, the SB 32, whatever the number was, that's related to housing. So again, this, this project is named the Commercial Corridor Project, but the money comes from the housing element. So everything says Commercial Corridor. I didn't pay attention to it too much, because I was like, woo-hoo, improve the Commercial Corridor. And then you read, and housing. And see that a whole old neighborhood could be, not by the city, but by developers, changed significantly. We already are having 10 houses going in the end of our neighborhood across from the trail, which is, the trail is super awesome. But those 10 houses, when they started building it, beautiful old oak trees. All of them are gone now, except for one, and I think they were supposed to save them, and they got damaged and they're gone. Roseville's beautiful downtown for all the trees, all the new Roseville, not as much for the lack of trees. And I understand the high-density that's going in West Roseville pointed out that it is going in other places, but what you're looking at right now, in, in my neighborhood, in the Enwood neighborhood, that's already a neighborhood, so there's no reason to change it from single-family to high-density. I'm still hoping that you take it out. And the other one, road die- And the other one, road diet on Harding. I don't think Harding's a great place for a road diet. I don't know if any of you guys have ever been there in the morning when they're dropping off at Adams Academy or picking up. I avoid the road. So, you know, I think that needs something, something to be looked at, because it's already impacted by that school a lot. Like, you're stuck if you're going to go there in the morning or afternoon for drop-off or pickup. But thank you for listening.
For your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? Hi, thank you very much for your comments. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for, we can hear comments at this time. Is there anyone, do you want to start us off?
I thank you, everyone, for your comments. I really appreciate them. I think, made me think more about Shearer Street, especially when you were talking about doing our corridors, and I'm thinking of Harding, Atlantic, Douglas, basic streets. So I really, and I've been over by your park over there and saw the new houses being built. So that was different, because I went out there and there's, that's new, that's new. So I guess I'm interested in looking at the corridors themselves, and I'm comfortable with the fact that people aren't, they can keep their houses in single-family and do what they want, they're not being taken over unless they wanted it to be. So, and I think the plan has merit. Mainly, when I looked at the plan, I'm looking especially at some parts of Atlantic Street and some parts of Harding, where things are just the old DMV building and things that just, it would be nice if we had, you know, a new look. Again, that's someone else's property, and they have to make the decision that they want a new look. But, and so possibly with this enhancement, there might be an incentive to do something that's, that makes Roseville look nice and also offer housing for people. And again, my concern is, there's no good to have housing without Trader Joe's and all the stores. You know, you've got to have places to go. And we've seen what happens in areas that have more houses and less amenities like that. It's pretty, pretty difficult to walk someplace. And so I, so I guess that, those are my comments. Look at the corridors, make sure that we have commercial areas, and don't forget that. And I don't see a need to work on Shearer Street right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Madanza, any comments?
I just, I want to thank everybody for coming out who spoke tonight. I think it's important, this is, all these steps are important in these processes to hear as we move forward. Councilwoman Rakucci kind of touched on a little bit of what I was just going to mention, but on the, specifically, these corridors are extremely important, and all of them could use some touching up, specifically the one on Harding and the one on Douglas as well. They're, the old DMV building, the hotel, which I won't name, and the Waffle Square and that whole area, you've got apartments and condos directly across the street. It's great, because I think there's an opportunity, if those parcels were developed, it would create kind of like an injection of energy into that neighborhood. I'm often saddened at how often people forget about Roseville Square just because of what's in there, and I think of what it was, and I know those businesses spins in there, and we've got the Starbucks that reopened, and you do have some businesses in there, but it would sure be nice if we could get a mix in there, you know, and kind of revitalize that corridor. Same thing on the Douglas side. I mean, we've got Echo Park going in farther down where Fry's used to be, but we still have vacant, the old Goodwill Building, you know, we've got the Hampton Inn there on the corner, which is going to transition to something else. And there's so much going on, you know, on these corridors and just these minor changes and giving the ability for the owners, if they do want to reinvest in their properties or if development wants to come in and make that better. A couple people mentioned just something simple about just the frontage and the yards and the trees and, you know, making that look aesthetically pleasing for people who walk and ride around that area. I mean, it's important, you know, that it's not only functional, but that it looks good as well. So I think it's great that we're investing the time to do this. I think that the corridors that were mentioned are all long overdue for this, and I hope that the people that are able to do that, you know, will reinvest, you know, and people will come in and apply that, that new vibrancy, if you will, into these areas. I think it can only, if it's done well and done correctly, it can only make it better. And I think that some of those existing businesses along these corridors could certainly be helped by, by what's been proposed tonight and some of the ideas that came forth and in staff's presentation and what was brought up tonight in public comment. So again, just want to thank staff and thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Bryce Maitanashow, you have any comments?
I actually have three questions, okay? Apologize, I didn't catch these in the first. So on the Atlantic Street corridor, what is that donut hole? I'm looking at Slide 9. What is that donut hole?
Slide 9?
Yeah. What's that donut hole there? Is that the, can we pull up Slide 9? Or do you know what I'm?
Where'd you say that's on, Atlantic?
Yeah, on the Atlantic Street.
That's the school. Was that Adelante?
Oh, was it?
It seems to have been too far set back. I was thinking the same thing, but.
It was the cross from the railroad crossing there, it's Adelante.
The Zisk property.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. And then I want to follow up on Councilmember Madanza's question or comment on Will's. Am I pronouncing the road right? Will's?
Willis Road, yeah.
So is that?
Oh, Willis.
Would that U-Haul have been a permitted use under this vision?
Yeah.
And when it went through it, did it look at that visual aesthetics? You know, and all, I mean, it goes through the design process. Doesn't it evaluate all of that, or is that in a specific plan already that took that into consideration?
That property's not in a specific plan already, and it would, the storage facility would be allowed in the, in any, if we changed to commercial, it would, it would continue to be allowed, as it is in the industrial zoning that it's in now. And no, during that design review process, I don't think when we look at our community design guidelines, you know, this project met the, for building design setbacks, height, all the development standards, we didn't evaluate.
It wouldn't have changed.
Viewshed from Harding.
This would not have changed that?
No, no.
Or, okay. Or made it a non-con?
Non-conforming. No, it would not do that.
Okay. And the last thing is, on the Douglas Sunrise Quarter, way out east, is that intentionally, it looks like a little asterisk at the bottom? You see, you can't, is that?
Yeah, I see what you're talking about, and that's just, so there, there's an oddity there where the parcel line and the zoning line actually, in a very thin band, about 30 feet wide, crosses the street.
Right.
So that's what's showing there. It's showing a blank where the street is, where the right-of-way is, and then the parcel continues.
Is that?
It's city-owned.
Okay. That's where the East Rose, East Side Radio Tower is going?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. This is a vision, and I think it's been stated, and I share concerns, you know, with property values, folks are really, you know, they have a lot of pride in their property, right? I ask the question about infill because there is a potential for infill, and you'll stay connected to this neighborhood so that, you know, if accessory dwelling units go in, what is that process? I mean, because that could add challenges to parking and challenges to, and I've been on that great street of Shearer Street. It's, it is one of those classic Back to the Future streets. It's wide and, you know.
Yeah, and per state law, accessory dwelling units, just a building permit is required as long as they meet the requirements.
So there could be impacts without ever, yeah, okay. Well, this is a vision, and I think it's been said by my colleagues, is you actually need someone to see and take advantage of that vision. Other than that, and Mr. Pell, I love your comments. Were you a land use planner? And, yeah, so, I mean, because, you know, yeah, I've been on Harding. Yeah, it's not, not a, it is not a pleasant, it's scary, scary, yeah. So it's a vision, and I'm glad we're taking the vision, and somebody, others can take it, you know, take an opportunity to look at the vision. I know historic, one of the pictures here of the decorative lighting is actually in the historical town Roseville, but in there, there is, there's, there's residential above commercial there. And so those kind of mixed uses and situations can actually revitalize and energize the neighborhoods. So those are my comments and my questions. Thanks.
All right.
Well, I know this is an interesting exercise to go through, and I assume the public is aware, and if not, the state's requiring us to do things like this. We have to show where we could possibly grow. They're not making us build it, or they're not making us take property, and we have no interest in doing that. I want to ask a couple of questions. If a few property owners got together under this new zoning and they decided out in Robert's neighborhood, for example, they wanted to build an apartment complex, well, there's no parking on the streets, there's no room for parking. So if that came to be, you know, a couple people, "Hey, we're going to do this, we've got the right to do this," would we require enough parking to be on the property, looking at that area, saying, "Hey, you know, you've got to cover the parking, because we can't, there's no overflow area"? Could you explain that process? Just, because I would be very nervous if I was there and somebody came up with that.
Yeah, we have parking standards for, off-street parking standards for residential development, so anybody who wanted to develop a site with housing would need to provide enough onsite parking for that housing.
So not just a building, but parking lot and everything built into there? Also, was it Derek Pell? Looking forward to seeing your application to Transportation Commission, so. On Shearer Street, the other side of the street, what is that zone right now? Can they build commercial property over there? What's the zoning right now?
So you're asking on the north side of Shearer?
Opposite side of her house.
Single-family, yes.
On the north side of Shearer, most of that is zoned multifamily right now. So all the way.
Single-family right now. So they could build an apartment complex now?
Yes, now, yes.
So they're, the lot, they're subdivided on lots that are more typical for a single-family home.
Right.
But they do have the R3 zoning district designation.
Got it.
So it's the attached housing, so you would probably have to, your example of several lots being consolidated would need to be done to have a true apartment complex.
One person could, they could like divide, build a bigger house.
One person could build probably three units on a, on a lot if they, to meet and meet the development standards, it'd be a little tricky, but hypothetically, that's possible. And that's with the current zoning. That's with the current zoning. One of the things we're trying to do is make sure that the land use and the zoning match up there. And so that's been one of the difficulties in our messaging, is you drive down a street, you see 10 single-family homes. The typical person doesn't realize that the zoning is R3. They don't know what that means. It's like, that's 10 single-family homes. That's not multifamily, quote-unquote, multifamily housing.
But it's already zoned.
But it is already zoned R3.
Okay. And so what this would just add is clarification on it.
Consistency with the general plan land use and the underlying zoning.
Okay.
Yes.
And would it allow also commercial now? Or, no?
No.
Okay. So it's only, only if it's already commercial, you can keep it commercial?
Right.
Okay.
It's really only allowing, it's really only allowing housing in the commercial zones, not allowing commercial in the residential zones.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, so across the street on Shearer Street from her house?
Yes.
There's really no change in what they can do with this zoning. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah, for all the properties zoned R3 now.
Okay. Good, I wasn't sure of that, so.
High-density and R3.
You want to tackle that, Lauren?
Clarify just in case.
R3 versus high-density.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and we do have this on the city's frequently asked questions page for anybody who's curious as well, but the zone controls, their, land use is like an overall big picture when you're looking at a map of the city. It's sort of color-coded, it allows you to tell in general what types of uses go where. The zoning is what actually controls what you can do with your property. So the R3 zone is the city's multifamily zone. The land use that, according to the general plan, is consistent with that zone is high-density residential. So there are a bunch of properties in these areas that have inconsistent land use. When the land use was put there, it was probably based on what was built rather than what the zone was, and so you have an inconsistency. But that doesn't mean you can't build multifamily housing because of that. What would happen in that instance is when you proposed your design, your multifamily housing project and asked for a design review permit, you would also have to pay for a general plan amendment to make this fix. But we wouldn't tell you, "You can't build a multifamily project on a property zoned multifamily." It would just be a matter of you having to pay for that and going through that process.
Got it. Okay. And this actually eliminates the payment on it.
Yes, that process.
The other comment I have is I noticed in the example, it had crosswalk enhancements, and I just got to say, we have crosswalk enhancements across Pleasant Grove out in the west plan, worst thing in the world if you're a resident near crosswalk enhancements, because the cars go.
Yeah, it depends on the enhancement, doesn't it?
Everybody hates it around there. So, yeah, just in a residential area, that would be kind of concerning to me if, you know, I thought I'd point that out.
Yeah.
They look great, but they sound really loud if you live right next to them.
Yeah, that is definitely something we're keeping in mind, what type of crosswalk enhancement is appropriate, given, you know, noise and other factors.
Thank you.
Mayor Bernasconian, just really quickly, on the parking requirements, I want to give a shout out to the fact that we have a legislative and regulatory team, and Councilmember Madanza and I are on that, and the city is opposing SB 1067, housing development projects that would take away the requirement for automobile parking. So I think somebody used the term downstream. I'll use the term a white dome building surrounded by reality to describe the legislature, but, you know, they're, they're in a one-size-fits-all world where somebody mentioned San Diego, you go to these urban areas, you know, it's a different environment than the Enwood neighborhood, but we're battling that, so thank you, Mayor.
So my comments on this workshop are, hopefully I'll keep them brief, but back when I was on the Planning Commission, this is something that I had been vocal about years ago, and that is, you know, you look at many of these corridors, which are the entrances to our city, and they don't, they don't look nice, in my opinion, most of them. I'm not saying all of them, but I have always viewed this endeavor as something that would, as Lauren talked about, creating consistencies and hopefully encouraging a reinvestment into our city. And many of these corridors, I would consider them to be vulnerable areas to our community. You know, when you look at the development that's taking place out west, you know, this is in some ways corridors or intersections that really, if not tended to, will be even more neglected. You know, they are places, you know, when you exit the freeway at Douglas, or you head towards Sunrise, or you head into, I mean, Atlantic coming in for a year, it might be the nicest one, but to me, they don't, they don't speak as reflective of what we want for them to, for our city. You know, you look at the valuable interstate frontage that we have, where we have a couple motels or, you know, really outdated shopping center, and, and that hopefully will spark these property owners and developers to create what we envision that this can be. And I feel like, you know, I love Roseville, my family's been here for five generations, and I do believe that there are some areas that are worthy of preservation, but most, I feel like most of what we're talking about in some of these dilapidated buildings, like we mentioned the DMV, or there's a number of them along the road, I mean, they, they need our support, so I'm completely supportive of this endeavor. You know, you talk about, like, we talk about visual aesthetics, I mean, in many of these areas, there are none. And I'm not saying that as a blanket, because there are, you know, you look at Park Drive, which is beautiful, or you look at Atlantic, which has had many improvements, but by and far, I see this as Roseville doing what Roseville does, and that is investing into our city. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. Staff did ask us about three different areas for our Staff did ask us about three different areas for our input. I don't know if we want to put that slide up, but I recall that there was one around the U-Haul general commercial and what our feeling was around that. There was a number two that, I don't know if that was around the, a mobile home that was circled?
That was, that was a, the side of, that's the side of, the north side of Shearer Street that we're trying to, we were contemplating changing the land use to be consistent with.
No, that's, so all of the land north of Shearer and west of East Street is already zoned R3.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, it flips to a mix of duplex zoning and single-family zoning. So we had, when we were first looking at this, imagined a consistent R3 zoning across, but because we've received a lot of negative feedback about anything like that, we are at this point contemplating leaving that zoning alone and just making the land use correction on the side where that zoning already exists.
And thank you for explaining that, and I'm supportive of that. I mean, the last thing that we want to do is have a resident come forward and think that somebody's taking their property. I mean, that's absolutely not the intent that it's like any of us want to do. So I'm in favor of that. And then number, and then number, okay, number, and then you said number three?
And that would be moving the, currently, the plan area boundary goes all the way across the creek. But originally, we were looking at making all those properties zoned RS to correct a lot of the non-conformity. But since we're no longer contemplating doing that, it doesn't make sense to us to have the boundary of the specific plan include that whole area. Now, we would still propose, though, to bring to you the land use corrections over the open space. It just wouldn't be as part of the specific plan. It would be as a sort of separate and parallel action so that we could make sure that that says open space and not low-density residential over the open space. But yeah, we're proposing to move that plan area boundary up to Shearer Street.
Yeah. So with all that said, I am supportive of this initiative. I want to thank staff too for all of your efforts to get involvement. I know over the last couple of years, it's been hard to do, but as we talked about, I think it's been an opportunity because there are people who don't live close by that do own property and folks that aren't able to make it out. So I appreciate your efforts. Unless council has anything else to add? I know this is a public workshop, no action taken tonight, so.
So if we can just put up one last slide, just to talk about what happens next. I did save that, mentioned that, I'd save that for the very end. So we will be working on putting together revised draft specific plans. We'll hope to have those out in August, or sorry, working on those in August and out in September. That would be very fast. That's this month. And then go to Planning Commission hearing in October, and then back here for hearings in November. And for everybody's information, the project website is up there as well as our email if anyone has any comments they want to send us or want to contact us to chat.
Okay.
Just an extra slide.
Thank you all for being here this evening and sharing your love of Roosevelt, too. Are we all good to keep going? I know we've, all right, we're good? All right. We'll move on to item 9.2 Parks, Recreation and Library Strategic Master Plan. Dean?
Well, good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. I'm Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director, and it is truly my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you our PRL Strategic Master Plan. This plan has been a year in the making, and we have been so fortunate to have Leon Younger and his team with Prose Consulting to lead this process. Leon started his career as a park and recreation professional, and he's now been nationally recognized as a consultant for over 30 years. Prose has completed over 400 master plans for park and recreation agencies across the country. He's seen it all, the good, the bad, the great, and he's brought all that experience to us in Roosevelt to make PRL the best that we can be. So before we get started, I want to take this opportunity to thank Leon and his team, and to also thank Tara G., your Park Planning and Development Superintendent, who's here with us tonight, as well as the many other PRL staff that worked so hard on this project. It has been a true team effort. So at this time, we'll turn it over to Leon Younger to share our Strategic Master Plan presentation.
Okay. Good evening, nice to see you all again. Thanks for listening to this final presentation. As you know, we started this process as really, as a way of creating a roadmap for PRL and in terms of how we want to look at land, facilities, programs, operations, financing, staffing for the, for the system for the future. And the plan was really built around a lot of public engagement through this process. And through that public engagement, including input from you, we were able to put the plan together. So today, we're just talking a little bit about, these are all the pieces of work that was actually completed as part of the plan. And much of this, I've reviewed with you already in different sessions, so I won't highlight that, but you recognize that these were the pieces of the work that basically was accomplished. PRL developed a new brand, and we really took that as part of the future PRL, as part of us, this overall system master plan, striving for excellence in parks and recreation and libraries. And we're going to build off of that, this brand as the name of the plan. We didn't really do anything different in relationship to the existing vision and mission that the park system already had, PRL already had. So they still, in this plan, to be the leader in creating a healthy community through progressive, sustainable and memorable experiences. So our mission basics is how do we get there? So we enhance lives and community by providing exceptional experiences. So in this process, the elements of the strategic plan are listed, but really, it's a 10-year planning process, which really doesn't alter any of PRL's current vision or mission. There are nine strategic initiatives and outcomes that we really wanted to address. And part of this really focused on supporting operational goals, a really strong action plan, and then performance measures that really kind of helped the organization and the council to really look at the outcomes and how to measure the success of the plan. This process looked at all of these various initiatives, and so I'm not going to talk, I'm going to talk about them, but these initiatives were played out in every aspect of the plan as we move forward. So starting with, you know, a healthy and livable community, that really the part of this is that Roosevelt is a great place to live and is more livable and healthy because of our People Park Land Programs and Facilities, the recreation opportunities. Residents and visitors of all ages benefit from the variety of recreation opportunities for our parks, facilities and programs. Parks and facilities, Roosevelt's developed parks, facilities and programs contribute to the overall quality of life through a variety of recreational opportunities that they are well-utilized and valued assets by the community because they are safe, clean and attractive through effective maintenance management practices. Our next initiative is open space and natural resources. Roosevelt's open space areas, undeveloped parklands and other natural resources are preserved and protected through responsible stewardship and sustainable maintenance and management practices. Libraries and culture, our libraries, museum and cultural arts programs and facilities enrich lives by fostering lifelong learning, celebrating our history, and by ensuring that our community has access to a variety of ideas and information. Also in these outcomes is the community engagement. We really want residents to be involved in our decision-making process, and they were through this process. Planning and development, Roosevelt's plans and developed parks and facilities and trails are in response to the needs of the priorities of the residents, and the city reinvests in those, in the system to basically accomplish that. As a high-performing organization, PRL is a great place to work because of our commitment to continuous improvement, and we develop our people with knowledge and skills to accomplish our vision. And physical responsibility is, PRL is managed and operated in a cost-effective and efficient manner that provides residents and customers a good value from the general fund tax support, development impact fees, assessment, user fees and other revenue. So I just say these because these are at the forefront of our thinking as we move through the planning process. One of the key things that came, there were, in two different priorities, one for parks and recreation and one for libraries and culture. But we consistently heard that from the community about developing the signature sports complexes, developing a new community center, aquatic library complex in West Roosevelt, updating older parks and facilities in the system, developing a connected trail system throughout the city so you don't have to get on street trails to basically be able to move freely through the city, open up nature areas for natural trail access, build sustainable funding options to support the system. You have an awesome system here that has been a long-term commitment with great leadership in the city who have put this whole planning, parks and recreation system together, and it's really evident, and people recognize it in your community. For the libraries, strategic priorities is to develop a sustainable funding strategy for libraries, build staff capacity to fulfill operational needs and community service expectations, enhance and expand program and services to meet engaging community trends, maintain and upgrade and reimagine spaces and facilities to meet changing service and operational needs, formulate a technology plan that provides an up-to-date environment and increase community engagement. These were the strategies that came out for libraries and the cultural side of PRL. So with that, we have these nine goals. And first of all is for parks, trails and open spaces, to provide parks, trails and open space that are designed to address the diversity needs within Roosevelt, to be the leader in creating memorable public spaces and to maintain those spaces in a safe, clean and attractive manner. So the recommendations that move forward on that are continue to maintain safe, clean and attractive parks, design and develop new parks and update older parks to elevate their value and encourage positive use, work with city partners to create a more connected trail system and promote trail use to support community health and wellness, develop natural trails in open space areas to better facilitate exploration of those areas, update master plans and work to identify funding sources for future development of large sites, including Pistachio Regional Park and Al Johnson Wildlife Area, and conduct regular park assessments to ensure high quality and elevate all parks on a five-year basis for prioritizing capital investments. The city does a really good job on lifecycle management. Now it's continuing that process. And then develop a strategy within local and regional partners to mitigate homeless impacts to parks and open space. As applies to our next goal, which is recreation facilities, is to provide public facilities that are designed to address the diverse needs of the community and maintain these in a safe, clean and attractive manner. The city has done a great job over the years in developing different types of facilities to meet the community's needs. But key recommendations that have come forward through the plan was create a feasibility study for a large community and aquatic center in West Roosevelt to serve that growing community, invest in multifunctional sports complexes that can be shared by the community and the various user groups in the city, develop additional special-use recreational amenities to include pickleball courts, a mountain bike course and skate parks, and develop a sports tourism strategy, feasibility study and operational plan for the new regional sports complex and future recreation complexes so that sports tourism is part of the overall strategy for the park system to add value to the city. Identify cost-recovery expectations for all recreation facilities and develop individual business plans to meet those expectations. Invest in the existing facilities, including adventure clubs. You have 13 adventure club sites now, and I know a couple more are coming online, the ability to constantly reinvest in them because they're such a major service to the community. Utilize GIS participant mapping tools to identify the community usage pattern. We found this to be very interesting in the process of evaluating how much use the facilities get as well as the libraries. And enhance aging golf course facilities and develop an improvement plan for each golf course. In addition to that, recreation program goals and objectives are to develop and expand programs considering new pricing strategies, expanding partnership opportunities and reinventing certain programs for long-term viability that really reflect market trends and needs. The goal of programs are to activate spaces, whether they're indoors or outdoors. And to do that, we want to expand programming in other areas. This came out of the public process to be stronger in programs for fitness and wellness, cooking classes, free low-cost community events, art and dance programs, education classes, outdoor trips, older adult resource programs and volunteer programs. Those are the key recommendations that came out of both surveys that we did, both of the online survey and the statistically valid survey. Consider establishing dynamic pricing strategies that would include primetime, non-primetime, weekday, weekend pricing of rental spaces to really maximize their use and value. Establish written partnership agreements with performance measures to ensure accountability on both partners' part that's involved in it. Seek annual feedback from the community regarding quality of programs and unmet needs every two to three years, so updating, are we doing the right things? Are we doing them right through a level of survey? And evaluate the business structure of the youth adventure club. It's a very well-received program. It's a tough program to operate, and it's one of the programs that we looked at that really needs constant attention to be able to fulfill everybody's expectations of that program. In terms of the operations and staffing, is develop systems and strategies and improve efficiencies and effectiveness, culture and branding, both internally and externally. To do that, we really, the organization itself, we recommend developing performance indicators to demonstrate desired outcomes so that the department is basically driven by performance indicators that look at efficiency and effectiveness of the system. Create partnership pricing and earned income policies. They have them, it's just updating them to really reflect the changes in this plan and also what the public's expectations are. Develop and implement a comprehensive succession plan and strategies to recruit and retain staff. The park system is not immune from people leaving and also trying to recruit people back to it to achieve what they've been achieving over the number of years with good staff and good professional folks in place. Provide ongoing increase opportunities for enhanced staff, personal and professional growth, and provide a better understanding of department management practices and facilitate a positive work culture. And develop and implement communications plan to increase the brand awareness and better promote the department's key focus and build on the appreciation for parks, recreation and library resources. And then continue to evaluate the department's organizational structure. You know, there's a really good outline process that was, we did through this, that really looked at the functionality of the system and how positions basically are lead and support positions. But being able to really put that in place and manage is a major component of this plan. And really then, there are so many other departments that impact the park system, like HR, IT and finance, and they all work well together, but continue that effort to maximize everyone's talents to help support the park system. In finance is to remain physically responsible in a changing world through effective use of financial data, partnership equity and positive stewardship. To do that, consistently look at additional funding sources to support the entire department, ensure that the partnerships are equitable, provide value, and then quantify, quantity and communication of economic value of PRL. A lot of times, I know people see park systems as more, sometimes as more of a spend department than an earn department, but the economic value of this park system is tremendous. It's evident the way people respond to the survey as well as how they responded to our ongoing and public engagement process. And then ensure that operational dollars follow new capital dollars. There's a lot of wishes that people want, the park system, and you guys have invested a lot of dollars in the park system, but people want more. I mean, they just love the system. And in doing that, they're always looking for what's the right, the next right answer, the next right opportunity, the next opportunity for my family or myself or my kids to basically interface with the system. And you've been really good about investing in this system. And appropriately invest in the existing system, especially in older parks. That was evident in many of the older areas of the city. They feel like that they'd like to see the park systems and those parks mirror what the newer parks are in like the West End and some of the new amenities that are in those areas, and to mirror that. As I mentioned, we talked about the, buy new museum and the historic sites is preserve and share cultural heritage in the Mido through exhibits, education and cultural experiences. In doing that, is develop a new revenue and funding sources for the museum, cultivate relationships with outside organizations with emphasis on the Native American tribal organizations, create an interpretive plan for Mido Museum and the historic sites, and increase public awareness and attendance at the Mido Museum and historic sites. We had a lot of discussion about how to do that in this plan. Continue to develop and grow the volunteer program because there's an incredible history associated with that museum and that site. And then the goals for the libraries and the culture areas, provide equitable access And then the goals for the libraries and the culture areas, provide equitable access to resources and programs to support lifelong learning and literacy for Roseville, and ensure that services are strengthened through increased and alternative funding, new partnerships and services, and establish new cultural arts opportunities throughout the city. And our recommendations are is continue to and grow funding sources to seek community partnerships for libraries, develop staffing model that really meets the needs and services expectations of the growing community, increase overall services and programming to meet community demand, including services outside of the library facilities, and then create feasibility studies and develop business plans for new facilities, including the Vittiman House and the Pistachio Regional Park, a cultural arts center to serve the community, and a new library facility in West Roseville. Those were key components that came out of the plan. Also renovate and modernize all three library facilities to provide increased access, improve security, and make better use of existing space. Maintain and upgrade technology, infrastructure to improve access and services both in the library facilities and remotely, and improve community awareness of library services through targeted marketing campaigns. So these are the key recommendations for the major divisions within PRL. And now we've kind of moved to the overall capital. It's really broken down into three tiers. One is capital for lifecycle projects. So, you know, all amenities have a lifecycle, and it's the ability to take care of the system, and the system was built over a period of years in kind of sections, like 20 years at a time, a big amount of development, and then another 20 years at a time was a lot of development. Well, all those come due relatively close in terms of updating, and the city's done a good job in staying ahead of it, but that we really need to make that even more of a priority in the future. Renovate and the enhancement projects. These are projects to renovate and update to meet the needs of residents or an enhancement needed. So if I have an existing park and these are the amenities in it, what are other opportunities in that park that would add value to the experience? That's kind of the second tier, and then the third tier are really new projects, visionary projects that have really kind of resonated to the top of the public's mind and also what they'd like to see the city invest in. And by doing that, we've identified those costs associated by tier for lifecycle projects, renovation and enhancement projects, and future projects. When you look at the estimated total cost of that, you can see that those numbers are strong in relationship to not only taking care of what you already own, but also what is expected and what people desire for the future. And then the protective funding levels are present, which really is about half of what the total amount of dollars projected would be needed, which is funded, which is really better than what I mostly see in a lot of towns I work in, is that people have a big appetite, but they don't have that much money already committed to it. So I commend you on that effort as well. And I do think that there are opportunities within the capital improvement plan and other funding sources that need to be addressed for the future or updated, and all of these opportunities are ways that the community could help support the park system. Many of these you have in place already, but it's the continued effort to keep them relevant and up-to-date, as well as the ability to look at partnerships and not-for-profits and conservancies and things that other park systems that are as aggressive and as well-managed as this one can also use to help fund the system for the future. And then finally, just really updating the developer impact fees to coincide with the true cost of development for new neighborhood. With the inflation changes occurring in the country, a lot of the impact fees that were created aren't really able to deliver at the same level of expectation of what those sites are now, and really have a review of how that might, how we could make adjustments in that. Consider increasing, obviously you have a hotel tax now, but, and there are a lot of other agencies who basically get support from hotel taxes, but where the park system can also be a participant in that tax could go a long ways, especially, I know that you're using some of that for the sports complex that you're considering and developing now in the next couple of years. And then really looking at a citywide parcel tax to cover areas of the city that do not have the level of landscape improvements that other areas in the city have, and also that you should consider the development of a conservancy to oversee the development and operation of the Al Johnson Wildlife Area, which we really think would have a lot of support if you did it. So those are this plan. I'll take any questions you have that are concerns you have, or I know we've had one-on-one with you, so you've had good questions in the past, so I'm glad to answer anything.
Great. Well, hopefully we will tonight, too. Does council have any questions?
Just a comment. I do appreciate looking at all our parks because, you know, we were 80-plus going and going strong, but we still have to remember, we started at one and keep it up, and so that we enhance all the parks and keep that a plan for it. And so, because Roseville is big and we enjoy all the parks, and so it's a good thing to have a plan that you identified of making sure we do that. That's good.
Thanks for the presentation.
There's a lot here. How will you measure success?
How do you measure it?
How will you measure?
I would measure that. We created an action plan. We actually worked on it the last couple of days. And really to evaluate every aspect, every amenity, every strategy, and who's responsible, what's its timeframe for implementation, what are the key performance indicators would demonstrate the value that we hit the mark in relationship to the recommendation. And so by measuring that, I think, and I've encouraged Jill and Tara to basically to consistently give the council an update on how well they're managing against the plan, so it's their kind of work plan, and you can see through all of the various recommendations where they are in the process, whether they started, they're halfway through, we're finished, so it's their scorecard. And I think when you see that, you will see very quickly how much this plan is being implemented and that the speed of it.
Okay. Thanks. I'm anxious to look forward. I'm anxious to see that, because you've got a lot here.
Yeah.
You could be successful and fail.
Yeah. Well, we've talked about that, that if you don't have a good action plan that really holds everybody accountable, it's so easy, two months, well, by three months, a year, and it just, and part of that is if you have the action plan and it's written and people assigned to it, they know that that's part of their commitment of their work to basically implement those pieces of work.
I was glad to hear about the Al Johnson Conservancy, sometimes the day job, and this council responsibilities coincide. So earlier this week, the Department of Conservation has something called a Sustainable Agricultural Land Grant, Sustainable Agricultural Land Conservation Grant, so I can get you information to explore that. And, you know, I know that a lot of this aligns with the council's goals and priorities, and certainly, every pun intended here, out west, they've been starving for grocery stores, they've been starving for gas stations. I don't know if you starve for a gas station, but anyway. And there's been a concerted effort on the part of the council to look, and you've captured it here, I didn't write it down, to appropriately invest in, you know, already existing facilities, so things like Weber Park that are coming along. And I think that, you know, plans, our parks, recreation, and trail system needs to have an equity component to it, and that's really important, and it has an opportunity, I think, I think you said somewhere here that there will be a, I'm looking for my note, that I had on this, oh, connecting the trails, oh, regular park assessments to ensure high quality. I will criticize you that you have the wrong quote here on the back. Before Steve Jobs was here, there was a guy named David Packard who had a partner named Bill Hewlett, I think his first name was Bill, and over 40 years ago, they had the vision to come to Roseville. And through changing times, that area that was the Hewlett-Packard campus changed, and there was some reinvestment in what was the remnant site, about 230 acres. And I think that there's a real opportunity here to capitalize on a changing environment. There's a private park there, and Jill knows, you know, this is no surprise to anyone that it is a treasure. It's a hidden treasure.
Wow.
And one of the things that I didn't see on the capital improvement, I know we don't buy parks, we often dedicate parks, but I didn't see joint use agreements on here, and I think I would want to see that added. I would certainly, you know, that Campus Oaks area where my son now lives in an apartment is, you know, has some, you know, open space. It's not connected. There's two beautiful ball fields there that are underutilized. I noticed in your inventory, adult baseball diamonds are something that we felt, we feel fall short on. I saw that there's a connectivity to the trail system, which we're a little short on.
Right.
And I would really like to see that, you know, that assessed. And, you know, because I think that whole Foothills Corridor, and I don't think Kokeva's in that plan, but, you know, the remnants of the HB campus are changing, and there's an opportunity there, and I'm not sure the business owners even know what they got. And so if we can help create equity for that burgeoning area, I'd certainly like to see it there, so I think that's it. But I'll get you the David Packard. It's on a rock, and there's a plaque right on the rock about fun and the importance of recreation to job performance, so anyway. Those are my comments. This is a, you know, a very visionary document. I'll spare you the Back to the Future comment now.
Councilmember Albert?
When I went through the strategic planning process, like the rest of us, privately with him, I think I asked my million questions, so I don't have any at the moment.
Okay. I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for further deliberation. You all have been very thorough in taking your time with us on a couple different instances. And I, our parks and our recreation, our libraries are definitely one of the many shining gems to our community, so thank you for your attention to this.
I have a comment. I appreciated through the process, I live on the western side of town now, and we have beautiful parks that we pay a lot of money for actually out there, but they're not like wow parks. We don't have a swim facility, we don't have, I'm getting more and more comments about 55 and older programming, because they have to go all the way across to Midu to get that, and we've got several 55 and older communities and more coming. And so I appreciate that we're looking at that vision. The unfortunate thing is building a brand-new facility is really expensive, but we've got a large number of people out there that don't have anything right now. And so I really appreciate that vision, looking forward. The dollars are kind of a big gulp there, and luckily, I know we're like everybody else. Nobody's fully funded like that, but I think we've got the right things in the future vision, so anyway, appreciate the process we went through. I thought it was really healthy.
Okay, unless there's...
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this work for you. I've known Roseville for a long time. When Mike was here, Mike Celato was here, really got to know Mike through his efforts here, but Deion, Dom, we've had, you've all had great leadership, Jill, and it's really a pleasure to do this work for you, and also to see the commitment the city has made to park system. It's one of the best commitments I've seen in the country, and it's, I don't say that easily. I'm just telling you, it's really a pleasure, and you've got great leadership between Jill and Tara and the rest of the team. They all contributed. I mean, it was a total team effort, and I just want to say, I wish you well, because you're well on your way, and you've got a great system, and I hope you win the gold medal.
We hope so, too. Thank you. Unless there's any further deliberation, we want to have a motion?
The motion on the floor is that the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22-309, adopting the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Strategic Master Plan. If I can get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm going to go with Councilmember Albert II by Councilmember Rakucci. Is that okay with you? Yes, okay, thank you. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our last item before us.
No.
Boy. All right, I guess I'm, you're right.
I was like, we...
Sorry, everyone.
Got motion.
Keep going, are we in a break?
We're only halfway there.
Plow through at this point.
Okay. All right, sorry to get you all excited. We will hear item 10.1 first, thank you. It's the Northeast Roseville Specific Plan Parcel 25 Sutter Parking Garage Expansion Design Review Permit Appeal. Like to open the public hearing and ask our staff to start with the presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the city council. I'm Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with the Development Services Department, and I have with me, well, of course, Mike Isom, our Development Services Director, Scarlett Marr, our Associate Planner, and Derek Ogden, our Senior Planner. Scarlett's going to be doing the presentation, but I wanted to give a quick overview, because we have a little bit of a unique situation here tonight. We have an appeal of a designer view permit for the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion, and I think as you've seen in your council communication, Sutter came before us earlier this year with two distinct projects. They want to build a new parking garage, basically expand the parking garage they have on their campus, and they want to build a new medical office building, 100,000 square foot total medical office building. Because of construction timing, they submitted two separate applications for those two projects. These projects are dependent upon each other. The parking garage will serve the new medical office building as well as the rest of the campus. So we prepared one consolidated environmental document, an initial study that led to a negative declaration. The reason we did that is we wanted to evaluate the cumulative impacts of both of those projects, knowing that the two projects would end up going to Planning Commission at different times. So the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion went to the Planning Commission in early May. We did receive, and you have all this correspondence in your packet, but we did receive an email from the Lozelle Drury Law Firm, who represents the Labor's International Union Local 185, with some objections to the environmental document, and called into question our use of a negative declaration. We responded to those comments, we took the project to Planning Commission, the Planning Commission approved the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion. Subsequent to that, Lozelle Drury did appeal that entitlement, and that's why we're here tonight, is to hear the appeal for the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion. The medical office building, which again, used the same environmental document, went to City, went to Planning Commission in late June, June 23rd, to be exact. We did not receive any additional correspondence regarding that project, regarding the environmental review of that project. That project was not appealed. So that project is approved by Planning Commission. The appeal period is over, and so we are now here again with the Sutter Parking Garage Appeal, the same environmental document, and as you'll hear, quite a few of the, or the majority of the concerns regarding the environmental document actually regard impacts associated with the medical office building, which is not before the council tonight. It's really the parking garage. So I just wanted to set the, kind of set the stage, because it can be a little bit confusing, two projects, one environmental document, one's on appeal, one's been approved. But, so with that background, I will let Scarlett do her, give her a presentation. Hopefully I didn't do the whole thing.
Thanks, Greg. Well, good evening, Mayor Bernascony and councilmembers. My name is Scarlett Marr. I'm an Associate Planner, and I'm here this evening to present to you the appeal for the, an appeal of the Planning Commission for the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion Project. So the project site is located within the Sutter Roseville Medical Center. So the project site is located within the Sutter Roseville Medical Center campus, and it's approximately one acre in size. The project site has a general plan land use, a general plan designation of business professional, and a zoning designation of planned development for a medical campus. The project site is surrounded by an existing parking lot with some temporary buildings to the north, existing medical offices to the east and south, and an existing parking garage immediately to the west. The project request includes a design review permit to construct a six-story parking garage of approximately 192,000 square feet in size. So the purpose of expanding the existing parking garage, as mentioned, is to support the existing campus, as well as the future medical office building, which was approved by the Planning Commission. The garage expansion would create an additional 551 parking stalls for the campus, and the project, the parking garage will have a height of 75 feet tall, which is, like I mentioned, one story taller than the existing five-story parking garage on the campus. The applicant does propose to use the same colors and materials on the expansion, and this will match the existing parking garage on site. Now, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study which led to a negative declaration was prepared for both projects, which previously we mentioned, and because the parking garage expansion and the medical office building projects are reliant on one another, we determined that in order to evaluate the combined environmental impacts of both projects, one comprehensive environmental document would be appropriate. The results of the initial study determined the projects will not have a significant effect on the environment, and as a result, the initial study and negative declaration was published for a 20-day public review period where we received no comments. Now, prior to the Planning Commission hearing for the parking garage, a comment letter was submitted by the Lozola Drury Law Firm on behalf of the Labor's International Union of North America. The letter essentially alleges that the project may have unmitigated adverse environmental impacts related to indoor air quality, noise, air quality impacts, greenhouse gas, as well as renewable energy. And on May 12th, prior to the Planning Commission hearing, staff prepared and provided the commission with a response memo to the law firm's letter. In summary, the memo concluded that the negative declaration did evaluate the environmental impacts for both the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion, as well as the medical office building, and the document could be relied upon for compliance with CEQA. Based on this information provided to the Planning Commission, the commission adopted the initial study and negative declaration, and approved the project, the parking garage expansion that evening. But on May 20th, the city received an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision from the same law firm. The appeal letter did not raise any new issues that weren't already responded to in the memo to the Planning Commission. A copy of the appellant's letter, as well as our response, are addressed in detail in the council communication, but for the purposes of this presentation, I will provide a summary of each of those items raised. So first, the appeal asserts that the project may have potentially significant indoor air quality impacts related to formaldehyde. The appellant alleges that our analysis is flawed because there is no discussion of formaldehyde impacts related to indoor air quality. However, it should be noted that the appellant's comment regarding formaldehyde is tied to the construction of the medical office building and not the parking garage, as mentioned. But because the appellant used the same memo on the appeal, a summary of these claims will be discussed, even if they aren't related to the parking garage project. So in order to support their claim, the appellant included a letter from a certified industrial hygienist who claims that the people in the medical office building will be exposed to high levels of formaldehyde because of the wood products used to construct the building, and this results in a significant cancer risk for its employees. The example used in the cited studies were based on residential construction projects that were constructed prior to current mandatory regulations which reduce formaldehyde in construction materials. With the current mandatory regulations, as well as the project's start date, the project will not have any significant impacts from formaldehyde emissions and related to the construction of the parking garage. Next slide, please. The second claim the appellant makes is that the project did not properly analyze and mitigate noise impacts related to the medical office building and its mechanical equipment, as well as the construction for both projects. So similar to the indoor air quality concerns, the appellant alleges that the noise impacts associated with the medical office building could result in significant noise affecting the residents nearby. Staff's response to this issue is that the medical office building is located approximately 100 feet away from the closest apartment building, and the parking garage expansion will be located approximately 400 feet away from this, the same apartment building. Because, because of the location of those projects, we also took a look at what was existing on the campus, and found that there is an existing medical office building, which is approximately 45 feet away from the closest apartment building. So based on this information, we determined that the medical office building, which will be similar to those existing offices on the campus, will not have, will not have any noise impacts related to the mechanical equipment, because it will be screened and mitigated for those noise impacts. In addition, the appellant, the appellant, sorry, in addition, the appellant also raised concerns with construction noise impacts. However, the project will be limited to construction during daytime hours, which would not create more noise than typically associated with projects in the city. Next slide, please. The fourth concern that the appellant raised was that the project did not properly analyze the air quality impacts from emissions of reactive organic gases. The appellant did evaluate the city's analysis, and they did prepare their own emissions model, they, which they found that the project size data entry that we submitted was incorrect, but their amended model was also incorrect. So based on this raised concern, we did update our model, and still found that the project was below the screening threshold and was in compliance. The fifth item raised by the appellant was related to the greenhouse gas impacts. The appellant asserts that the city improperly relied on the general plan update to analyze these impacts. The project's vehicle trips and vehicle miles traveled resulting from the full build-out of the campus were evaluated as part of the citywide analysis prepared for the general plan update EIR, and as part of the citywide build-out model. By including this information in the general plan update EIR, the project is not required in new analysis, and per the tiering provisions of CEQA, the project can rely on the analysis of the general plan update EIR, and no additional environmental analysis is required for the Next slide, please. So lastly, the appellant asserts that the project had an obligation to evaluate whether any renewable energy features could be incorporated in the project. There is no obligation for a project to evaluate renewable energy features if a project does not require an EIR. So the project, because the project does not require an EIR, the comment is not applicable to this project. Next slide. So in addition to the comment, an appeal letter received from the Lozola Drury Law Firm. On June 16th, staff received a letter from the Thomas Law Group representing Sutter. The, the letter stated that the applicant agreed with the city's decision that the initial study and negative declaration was the appropriate CEQA document for the two projects, and that it adequately evaluated the potential environmental impacts for each project. And on June 23rd, the Planning Commission did consider the medical office building and approved it that evening. So following that public hearing on June 21st, the city received a second letter from the Thomas Law Group, once again confirming that the initial study and negative declaration for the parking garage was the appropriate CEQA document, but in their letter, they provided, they suggested that the project could also have been exempt, based on the infill exemption. The letter with their supporting evidence is included as Attachment 6 in the council communication. Now, as the council is aware, yesterday afternoon, the city received a response letter from the Lozola Drury, explaining whether the city's initial study and negative declaration is flawed, and how the city did not properly analyze the air quality impacts from the medical office building, specifically related to the construction phasing of the project. So Thomas Law Group provided a response memo earlier today, which the city council also received. In short, their response provides additional evidence to support that our initial study and negative declaration document, and refutes the claims made by the Lozola Drury in their recent letter. In addition to the Thomas Law Group response letter, city staff also put together a memo which augments the Thomas Law Group response with additional evidence that the project will not have air quality impacts related to the construction phasing of the medical office building project. So based on our responses to the appeal, and the Lozola Drury's letter, both staff and Thomas Law Group believe that the initial study and negative declaration are adequately evaluated the environmental impacts of the project, and is consistent with the requirements of CEQA, and as such, the city council should adopt the initial study and negative declaration for the Sutter Parking Garage Expansion Project. Next slide, please. Early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations website. In addition, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood community meeting on April 5th, where they answered questions from the audience related to the viewshut of the parking garage expansion, as well as the medical office building, and questions related to the parking. So in addition, the public hearing notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, as well as published in the Roseville Press Tribune, and once again, on the Arcona website. In conclusion, staff finds that the project allows the beneficial use of the site. The project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the general plan, the zoning ordinance, as well as the Northeast Roseville Specific Plan, and the community design guidelines, and the required findings of approval can be paid for the project. Therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to deny the appeal, adopt the initial study and negative declaration, and adopt the required findings of fact and approve the design review, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions.
Very much. Does the council have any questions of staff? Let me start, Councilmember Albert, do you have any questions?
It's time.
Staff answered all my questions.
I'm good, thank you.
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we ask the applicant if they want to come forward? And will 10 minutes suffice for you?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll make this quick. Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Dan Conwell, I'm the Director of Planning, Architecture, and Design for Sutter Health. My team's role is to support the early planning approval of all major capital projects within the Sutter Health not-for-profit network of acute care hospitals and ambulatory care facilities. I'm here tonight with introductory remarks on behalf of our project developer, as well as Sutter Roseville Medical Center. Tonight, we are requesting that the council accept city staff recommendations and deny the appeal of the May 12th Planning Commission hearing, adopt the initial study negative declaration, and design review approval for the Sutter Roseville Parking Garage Expansion, including the adoption of the four findings of fact and the 62 conditions of approval. With me tonight is the developer's architectural partner, Dreyfus &amp; Blackford Architects, represented by architect Sarah Bergman. Sarah is in turn representing the third-party entity that will be designing and building the project for Sutter Roseville Medical Center. In addition to Dreyfus &amp; Blackford Architects, the other main members of the team are the developer, Sepervich-Domich Real Estate Development, and the construction team led by WFC Builders. Additionally, Chris Boucher from the Thomas Law Firm is here to address any CEQA questions that may arise. It has been my privilege to have been associated with healthcare design in Roseville, starting with the support of the original Roseville Community Hospital over 30 years ago. Over the past 20 years, I have led the planning and development of the current Sutter Roseville Medical Center campus. This association has also included a collaborative relationship with the city of Roseville, and we are greatly appreciative of the support we have received from staff and elected officials over these years. This partnership has allowed Sutter Roseville Medical Center to continue to expand our range of services to become a regional medical center, providing many advanced services including trauma and stroke center designation, cardiac services, newborn intensive care, acute rehabilitation services, and cancer care, in addition to many other outpatient services and physician offices. Many of the project team members, including Sarah, the developer, and the contractor, are also no strangers to the campus, having developed on behalf of Sutter Roseville Medical Center and the Sutter Medical Foundation, medical office buildings at 2 and 8 Medical Plaza Drive, as well as the Phase 1 of the parking structure, we are seeking, we are seeking to expand as part of this application. This project is the latest step in the continuation of planned growth of the Sutter Roseville campus to meet the growing needs of healthcare within the region. This process started with the land acquisition and environmental processing in the 1990s that paved the way for the original 170-bed hospital and the first medical office building. In the early 2000s, a second medical office building and an ambulatory surgery center was added to the campus, as well as an expansion to the hospital's emergency department. In 2006, the hospital's long-range campus master plan was updated, and that update informed the conditional use permit approval for an ultimate campus build-out of 1.1 million square feet of healthcare facilities to serve the growing needs of Roseville, Placer County, and the greater Sacramento Valley Sierra region. There have been multiple, multiple expansions to the campus over those 16 years since the conditional use permit approval. To date, the hospital has expanded to 382 licensed beds, and has one of the largest and busiest emergency departments in the region, with 68 treatment stations. We also have vacant space in the hospital that will house an additional 37 licensed beds and five additional operating rooms in the coming years. The expansion of the 12 Medical Plaza Parking Garage will provide additional parking capacity to support current and future healthcare services on the campus. The architectural character of the garage expansion will be consistent with the existing parking structure and the overall campus aesthetic. I thank the council for their consideration of this important project in the continued growth of healthcare services for the community. The Phase 2 expansion of the parking structure will further advance Sutter Health's key results of providing safe, personal, affordable, and accessible healthcare to the communities we serve. I welcome any questions you may have for our team.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the appellant, do they want to come forward?
Good evening.
Evening. And will 10 minutes or less work for you?
I thought I was going to have five, so I might speak a little closer, slower.
Got it.
But, you're doing a lot tonight. So, good evening, my name is Brian Flynn, from the law firm Lozola Drury, here on behalf of Labor's International Union Local 185. So Lyona's appeal of the project does concern whether the negative declaration prepared for the new office building and the garage expansion complied with CEQA. And so even though the city split this entitlement process into two parts, the negative declaration covers both, and we believe you really can't separate them. In fact, we had already, you know, when the Planning Commission first adopted the negative declaration for the, for the garage, the motion was to whether, you know, to adopt the negative declaration. We appealed that decision, the adoption of a negative declaration, and we actually didn't get notice that the other hearing went forward, and we're actually surprised when it did, saying, well, wait a minute, we already appealed this neg-deck, we're already going to go in front of the city council on it. So, I apologize, there's been a confusion, but our belief is that both those projects are in front of you tonight, at least as far as the neg-deck is concerned. And under CEQA, a negative declaration is not appropriate when there's substantial evidence of a fair argument. The project may result in significant environmental impacts. We submitted multiple expert analyses and written correspondence to the Planning Commission and to this council, raised issues out of the project's impacts to indoor air quality, outdoor air quality, greenhouse gases, energy, and noise, and city staff and the applicant have responded to these comments, but we don't think we've alleviated all the issues. So for that reason, Lynn is requesting the council grant its appeal, because the negative declaration is inappropriate under CEQA, and we believe a full environmental impact report is required. So without going into every issue, I do want to highlight a few bullet points, particularly pertaining to air quality. And we did retain air quality experts from the firm SWEAP, and they first looked at the project, and they found some issues with the air quality model that was used to estimate the project's emissions. They found that the city's model had used incorrect land use sizes for both the parking garage and the medical office building, and that led to an underestimation of the project's emissions. When SWEAP fixed those numbers, it turned out the project's emissions of reactive organic gases, ROGs, were significant. We pointed out that error in our comment. The city corrected the error, thankfully, and reran the model. However, when they reran the model, they made other changes that weren't in the initial model, particularly to construction phase lengths, excuse me, and that again led to an underestimation of the project's emissions. So SWEAP looked at that model, corrected for the phase lengths, and again found that the ROG emissions would be significant. And so, you know, this is the type of evidence that establishes a fair argument that the project's going to have significant air quality impacts, and as such, the negative declaration is not appropriate. Sorry, it's been a long time since I've done in-person hearing, I've been virtual for three years, so, standing at a podium is a little different right now. We also submitted comments from an indoor air quality expert, Francis Offerman. He did find that future employees of the office building would be exposed to a significant increased cancer risk from emissions of formaldehyde. There's been a critique of Mr. Offerman's analysis, claiming that the studies he relied on did not accurately reflect the conditions for this project. In particular, the response claimed that the houses in Mr. Offerman's studies were constructed with more loosely regulated materials than this project would be constructed with today. They also claimed that the ventilation rates in a medical office building are going to be different than the ventilation rates in residences. Mr. Offerman... Mr. Offerman did reply to both of those comments, and those submitted to the council. He explained that the materials that were used in the homes he studied were the same type of materials that are going to be used here, they were subject to the same standards by the California Air Resources Board, so there's no difference in the materials that would be used. He did concede that the ventilation rate for the medical building is going to be higher and better, more ventilation, than there'd be in the homes. However, that didn't reduce the formaldehyde risk to less than significant. So the numbers he had, you know, with the, he originally said it was going to be 17.7 in 1 million. He reran it with the higher ventilation rates, it was 17.3 in 1 million, so we got a 0.4 reduction. The threshold is 10 in 1 million. So 17.7 or 17.3, you're still in excess, you still have a significant impact, and it still requires an EIR. I do want to quickly note the memorandum from the applicant that claimed the project might be exempt from CEQA under the infill exemption. So note, the infill exemption only applies if a project does not have significant air quality impacts. So the impacts I just discussed from ROGs and formaldehyde are significant air quality impacts, which means we believe the project would not qualify for an exemption either. So because the project doesn't qualify for the exemption, and there's a fair argument of these significant air quality impacts, requesting the council grant the appeal tonight as an EIR can be prepared prior to approval of the garage or the medical building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? They can come forward. Okay, I'll close public comment. Are we moving into a rebuttal, or?
Yeah, so the applicant.
Does the applicant have any further comments?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Chris Butcher, Thomas Law Group, on Bath, Sutter. I'll be brief. The appellant has raised arguments relating to the medical office building because they have not raised any potential impacts associated with the parking structure. As city staff has explained, the only project before the city council tonight is the parking structure. The California Supreme Court has addressed this very question. When a city has approved a project and issued a notice of determination, as it's done on the medical office building, the time to challenge that project has run. Today before the city council is the parking structure. Their arguments, for example, about formaldehyde has nothing to do with an open-air parking structure built out of concrete and steel. Therefore, we respectfully request that you deny the appeal and uphold the commission's unanimous approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for further deliberation. If there's any questions that the council has of staff, Councilmember Alver?
So I think the concerning thing to me right now is just the appellant's claiming that they appealed the whole project, yet only, they only ended up with the parking garage because the building went on through. Can I hear some response to that? Because that's a concern, if that is accurate.
Sure. The appellant, in fact, I just flipped the wrong page, excuse me. Hannah Hughes from the Lozau Jury Law Firm reached out to us in mid-June, because the Lozau Jury Law Firm, every year, asks to be on our notice list. So they get noticed, they get a public notice for every environmental document we prepare, every planning project that we send out public notice for, they get a mailer, they get a postcard. So after the May Planning Commission hearing and the appeal for this project, the Sutter Parking Garage, we started working on the medical office building, knowing that we wanted to take the medical office building to Planning Commission before we scheduled an appeal. We figured that there would be an appeal of the medical office building, to be honest. So she reached out to us on June 17th and asked, in fact, I have my email right here on my laptop, and asked what the status is. And my reply was, "We're taking these two projects as two distinct projects. They're two distinct planning entitlements, they're using the same environmental document." So we're going to hold a hearing, and because it's on appeal, the negative declaration for the parking garage is on appeal, we will be asking the Planning Commission to adopt the negative declaration in support of the entitlements for the medical office building.
What was the date of your reply on that?
June 17th.
Okay.
So the Friday, she received the notice the week before the Planning Commission hearing and contacted us on the 17th. I replied the same day to let her know what the status was. And so, you know, we didn't get, we didn't receive any additional correspondence after that. In fact, we didn't hear back from Lozau Jury until mid-July. In fact, I'm not sure we heard back from them. I think I let them know to confirm when the appeal date was set for tonight.
So the problem with them is you did notify them, and they missed it, or something?
We've tried to be very, very transparent and clear that there's two projects, they do have one environmental document, but they were going at separate times to the Planning Commission. And we've, you know, Development Services staff, you know, coordinated with the city attorney's office on this approach, as well as the applicant, to make sure everybody was comfortable that we were, you know, complying with CEQA, complying with Landy's Law.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff from council? Okay. If not, can we have a motion, please?
Thank you. So tonight, the city council will consider adopting the Sutter Parking Garage expansion, initial study negative declaration, and adopting Resolution Number 22-307, denying the appeal from the May 12th, 2022 approved, I'm sorry, approval by the Planning Commission, and adopting the four findings of fact and approving the design review permit, subject to 62 conditions of approval. With that, if I can get a motion to approve?
I'll move that.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshelt with a second by Councilmember Mendoza. With that, we'll start our roll call. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernisconi?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into item 10.2, Sierra Vista Specific Plan, Parcel JM41 and JM30, General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Rezone and Development Agreement Amendment. Good evening, again.
Good evening, again, Mayor Bernisconi, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is our, this isn't quite a joke, but our monthly rezone for JMC on one of their properties in the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and I'm going to turn it over to Shelby Maples to do the presentation.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor Bernisconi and council members. My name is Shelby Maples, Associate Planner, and I have a presentation for you on the JM30 and JM41 project. The project is located on approximately 21 acres in the Sierra Vista Specific Plan area and is bordered by Pleasant Grove Boulevard, Fittament Road, and Upland Drive. JM30 is designated as a high-density residential parcel with an R3 zoning designation and is approximately seven and a half acres in size. And JM41 has a community commercial land use designation and community commercial with a special area overlay zoning designation on approximately 13 and a half acres. And the project proposes the adjustment of the boundary between JM30 and JM41, which, if approved, will convert .44 acres from HDR to CC land use. Because the boundary adjustment is between two parcels with different land uses, it requires a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, rezone, and the development agreement. There are no change to the number of units that'll be built on HDR Parcel JM30. There's a conceptual plan that's included in your council communication as part of the Planning Commission staff report, which shows that the 176 designated units can be built on the site as it's been reconfigured. Additionally, the adjustment will improve the commercial viability of JM41, and it also increases the frontage along Pleasant Grove Boulevard and connects existing commercial parcel W20 to JM41. So no individual projects are proposed at this time, and future development of all of these parcels will be subject to designer view. The proposed project is consistent with the intent of the general plan and the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and will not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, or welfare. Finally, the project requests the Third Amendment of the Moyer and Computer Deductions Development Agreement to reflect the land use acreage changes, and there are no other changes to the development agreement proposed. Next slide, please. Early notification of the project was posted to the Arkona website, as well as notice of the Planning Commission hearing, and notice was mailed out to property owners and neighbors within 300 feet of the affected parcels. No comments were received on the project. Planning Commission heard the project on June 23rd of this year. The applicant stated they were in agreement with the conditions of approval, and no one spoke on this item. The Planning Commission approved the requested tentative subdivision map, which included 12 lots, one for the high-density parcel JM30 in its reconfigured state, and then 11 parcels on JM41, and the Planning Commission recommended that the city council approve the remaining entitlements. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the general plan, Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and zoning ordinance. The required findings for each entitlement can be made, and an addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report was prepared for the project, and it was found that there were no new or more severe impacts that would result as part of the proposed project. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends that the city council consider the addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan EIR and approve the General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Rezone, and Development Agreement. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shelby. Does council have any questions of staff?
I have no questions. Staff hasn't already answered?
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item?
I believe the applicant's here, Mayor.
Do you want to come forward? We've sat here all this time, and you've got to say something, right? Thanks for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor Bernisconi and members of the council, Ryan Bieske, John Moyer Construction, and M.I.L.L.C. We've been working on this project for past year, among all our other projects, so really appreciate all you guys' hard work. With that, I'm here to answer any questions, but we respectfully request approval of the project.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Okay, I'll close public comment, close public hearing. Any other deliberations from staff? You have a question?
Comment. I'm really familiar with this property, especially the W20 sliver up in the corner on our map, it's the top piece. And this is a fantastic design, in my opinion, because this is going to actually open that up. They're planning to put a coffee shack there, and it was just really tight, and this is going to be so much nicer, they can actually have a lot more traffic flow. I think it's a really good idea for the community, and I think it really helps the commercial area, and it makes that whole commercial area much more viable for the community, so I'm very supportive of this concept.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion?
So, the motion for tonight is that the city council will consider the addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report, and adopt Resolution Number 22-310, amending the general plan to change the land use designation on certain real property in the City of Roseville. And adopt Resolution Number 22-311, amending the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, introduced for first reading in ordinance of the City Council of Roseville, amending zoning ordinance number 5428 of the City of Roseville, changing the zoning of certain real property located within the City of Roseville, and consider the five findings of fact, and introduce for a first reading an ordinance adopting the Third Amendment of the Development Agreement by and between the City of Roseville and SVC1 LLC, relative to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Alver, with a second by Councilmember Rakucci. We'll do roll call, starting off with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernisconi?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Okay, now we are at our last item. We have a public hearing for item 10.3, the 2700 North Hayden Parkway Fittament Ranch F8A Apartments Fee Deferral. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Gina McCall with the city's Economic Development Department, and tonight I will be presenting on the Fittament Ranch F8 Apartments Fee Deferral Request. In June of this year, the developer of the apartment complex submitted a request for a deferral of certain city-controlled impact fees. Typically, impact fees would be collected at building permit issuance. This request would allow certain fees to be deferred to building occupancy. The total impact fees for the project are approximately $12 million. Following review of the request by the applicable city departments, approximately $4.9 million of those fees are eligible for deferral. The eligible fees are listed on this slide and in your council communication. The city does charge interest on deferred fees and an administrative fee for processing the request, so there will be no financial loss to the city for the fee deferral. Next slide. Thank you. For background, the Fittament Ranch F8 Apartments is located at 2700 North Hayden Parkway, near Blue Oaks Boulevard, in the West Roseville Specific Plan. The project includes 330-unit multifamily apartment complex with onsite amenities on approximately 12 acres. The apartment complex provides a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, ranging from 626 square feet to 1,200 square feet. This project will help the city meet its RINA numbers for affordable housing, and will be offering units for extremely low, very low, and low-income households. The project has already received planning entitlements and has submitted for building and improvement permits, so tonight's request is related to, is not related to the project design, and is considering the timing of payment of impact fees. The Roseville Municipal Code and Government Code, Section 53083, requires all fee deferrals to be approved via a public hearing. The request is routine in nature. The city's fee deferral program is an important economic development tool that facilitates new development that may not otherwise be financially feasible without this program. Staff is therefore recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving a fee deferral for the F8A Apartments project in an amount of approximately $4.9 million plus interest until final of building occupancy. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions of Gina? Okay, I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close public comment. Does the council have any other comments, questions of staff? We have a motion? Thank you, close public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. The city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22308, approving fee deferrals for the 2700 North Hayden Parkway Fittament Ranch F-8A Apartment Project. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshelt, with a second by Councilmember Rakucci. With that, we'll start off our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernisconi?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Both. Okay, do we have any? Well, let me do one last public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to talk to the council on any items on the agenda? I'll close public comment. Any comments from staff this evening?
From me, thank you.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Alver, do you have any comments for us?
I hate making comments when it's late evening. I do want to point out, or thank, the downtown Roseville merchants and the downtown Roseville Partnership, they put on a fantastic downtown Tuesday nights. I think the community really enjoyed being able to come back, and I know for the several that I came down for, the restaurants were doing great. It's a really good thing for the economy and just for quality of life, I think. Also mentioned that West Park High School put on a tailgate fundraiser for their West Park Booster Club, and that was really neat to watch the community come out and help support the Booster Club for our high schools. And we had a really good economic development and government relations meeting last week, the Chamber of Commerce put it on, and Chief Bergstrom and Sheriff Wu and Morgan Dyer came out, and we talked a lot, and we got to learn a lot more about some of the stress that the state puts on us and some of their goals down the road. It was just really interesting to listen to the three of them talk about public safety and the importance of it, and the challenges of it as well. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, for generations, for decades, those who've sat in these chairs before us have carefully crafted a community that we're all very proud of. Tonight, we heard, we heard... Tonight, we heard, we heard some reports about visions for the future. Councilmember Mendonza and I sit on the Law and Regulation Committee, and last week, as we were having our meeting, a gentleman came in in his, in his running gear. There's a speaker outside that projects meetings. And he heard the word, he heard, I'm not sure what sentence it was, but it was related to quality of life. And he heard our staff, that Mark Walensky and Megan Scheid lead, talking about what they're doing to combat and to maintain our quality of life. He absolutely stopped running with his wife. He came in here, and he said, "Thank you." And so it was an extraordinary moment, but I think it's a more, a moment to me that is a reflection of so much of what this community truly feels. They're not often in this room, but they're appreciative of those who came before us and the work we're doing. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendonza?
No comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Just a couple. I had the opportunity going with Northern California Power Association. We go annually to see some of our sister, our reservoirs and other, our other agencies on what they do. So this time, we went to New Spicer Reservoir, and it's in Calaveras County. And so it's a hydroelectric facility that we get a renewable energy from, and we've been joint partners with them for a long time. And I have to echo what Bruce was talking about, community. We go up there, too, because we work very close with these water districts, Utica, Attica, Alpine, Calaveras County, and they're small, but they're very mighty, and with them, we have arrangements on, on the water up in that area. And so it's really pretty nice to go, also to see how the reservoirs are doing. It's about 60% full. And one thing, it's kind of interesting to note, New Spicer is built like in 1989, but there's other parts of it, because this is kind of where a lot of the gold rush was done. They have little, little dams that they had. And so like Alpine was built in 1856, Union Valley, Union 1800, and Utica in 1890. And so they're almost under historical preservation. They're used, they hold water, but when they need to be, have some work done on them, they have to use the same kind of equipment and things that they used at that period of time. So the stones and how they're cut and everything is put. So it's, it's very interesting. It's nice, and it's just really nice to keep those ties with our community. And we work closely with the group because it just makes, just makes good sense, and they're real good people. So we did that. And then yesterday, I think most of us went out to National Night Out, and that's been going on for 39 years all over the United States, not that long with us, but for a long time. And it helps build our community, our, just improves neighbors getting, talking to each other and making sure that their neighborhood is safe. It also has an opportunity for the police and fire, and actually, a lot of people. We had, we had, we had the council, but we had animal control, we had FBI, and, and different other entities, a lot of, saw their volunteers there, and they went out. And we just saw people being very happy to be with their neighbors, and Councilmember Mendonza and I end up being together, and we had, and I'm sure that's what others did, answered a lot of questions that the neighbors had. You know, who do you talk to? What's happening on this issue? And they just were very happy to, and talked to us, and they asked questions with the police department of, of issues that were occurring. So it was, it was nice, hot, though. It was hot. That was not nice. But I swear, the only time we ever had in Roseville, when we have Placer County Fair, it's hot, the State Fair is hot, and National Night Out is very hot. But besides that, the people were really nice, and they really appreciated us coming there. And, you know, I really, we both, Tracy and I, really appreciated being there and being with them, and it was just a, a good feeling of working with our community, so that's it.
Looking forward to cooler air at the tree lighting.
Yes.
Yes, that'll be better.
Yes, it was, it was hot, but it was not smoky, and I think I saw you with a photo of an ice cream.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
That was, for that, so a way to cool off. Yes, we were all out last night for National Night Out, and I just want to thank the police department for their coordination of that. I will be at Sun City tomorrow morning to swear in their new board of directors, and so that'll be an honor for me to do that. I was part of the homeless task force today, a couple-hour meeting that we've been meeting for about a year now, and had a really productive conversation consisting of elected offices throughout the county and, and staff and people who provide services to our unsheltered population. So I would just tell my council to look forward to minutes that come out of that meeting, but there definitely was consensus in a couple areas reached today. And a number of us attended last week, the, talking about how we all talk and keep in touch. There was a dinner last week of the Placer County elected folks, and so that's a great opportunity for us to be able to connect with our neighbors. And I will not be at our next meeting, August 17th. I can't remember the last time I missed a meeting, but we'll have Vice Mayor Haldeshelt holding down the fort. I have a work conflict. So I will not be back until after the State of the City address, which is August 26th at West Park High School, a longstanding tradition for our city, for the mayor to deliver updates about what is happening. And we have had community step forward to sponsor the event so that no public funds are used, because we do things like screens and podiums, and, and so there's been definitely a generosity of folks that have stepped up to help with the breakfast portion of it, which my council will be there for that. And then the State of the City address is at 10:00 a.m. That's free for anybody who would like to attend. So, and I, last I checked, we had a call on it today, I think, I don't know, maybe more than 100 people have signed up, so. Anyway, with that, unless anyone has anything else, I will adjourn our meeting until you are all back here August 17th, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.